Hello, my name is Derek Beckwith, I'm the Vice Chair of the Beverly Planning Board, and it's my honor to call tonight's meeting Tuesday, July 15, 2025, to order. And we'll begin the meeting on a solemn note. For those people who both are and aren't aware, our Chairperson Ellen Hutchinson passed away on July 6, 2025, much to all of our sorrow and dismay. Ellen was a pretty remarkable person, you know, as I think everyone who met her knows. She was a lifelong resident of Beverly, graduate of Beverly High School, where she excelled academically and athletically. She graduated from Simmons College and Suffolk Law. She had a distinguished career in municipal taxation and real estate law, and was well-regarded throughout the community, the accolades that have come online. You know, anyone who wants to Google or Bing or whatever the search of the day is will be able to see a lot of the wonderful ways that Ellen contributed that way. She also had a very deep commitment to Beverly, serving on the Planning Board for seventeen and a half years since her appointment in 2008. And she was appointed Chair of the Beverly Planning Board in February of 2018. So for seven and a half years, she sat in the chair and she guided the committee forward. She's been described, if you look at her memorial write-up on legacy.com and other places online, you'll see that just scores of people have talked about their experiences with Ellen, and they've described her as brilliant, thoughtful, insightful, collaborative, knowledgeable, fair, kind, caring, warm-hearted, great-hearted, quick wit, keen sense of humor. I think for all of us on the board, we've experienced all of those things with Ellen. She was a very, very special person. I know that personally for me, she was a mentor in many ways, and watching the way she guided the committee and the way she worked with people, the way she treated everyone the same, whether you're applicants or representatives of applicants, or members of the public, or people impacted by projects, members of the committee, everyone. She was fair, she was clear, she was understanding, she was everything, really, in terms of the way she helped us move the business of Beverly forward. At her funeral on Saturday at St. Mary's Star of the Sea, her sister Janice talked about Ellen's family life, and how well she was loved and regarded, and how much love and spirit and generosity she brought to her family and community. And she talked about her relationship with her nieces and nephews and grandnieces and grandnephews, and how many of her, the younger generation, I guess, of nieces and nephews had begun posting online. Everyone should have an Ellen in their lives. And I think that rings so true, and we, as a board, as people who work together on Planning Board business, as a community, are all grateful to have had Ellen in our lives. Well, that's, I've said enough. What I'd like to do now is to see if any members of the committee, I welcome people if you also want to say anything. Marcus?
Yeah, I guess I'll start just by, you know, I'm one of the newer members on the board, like October, November, or the fall sometime, and Ellen just really welcomed me with open arms, like you may feel part of the board, as many of the other members have too, but, you know, her being the Chairperson, the captain of the team per se, it was especially special, and just seeing her, you know, command the room, and like Derek said, just the type of person that you can just, you know, when she talks, you can learn something. And again, I didn't know her too well, besides a couple handfuls of times I've met her here and talked to her here, but her, you know, when I joined the Planning Board, I wanted to be part of the community more, just be a little more involved, and I think she's a shining example of that, a role model in that sense of being involved in the community in different ways than she was, and it's just, it's just too bad. But that's all I got to say. I think I echo what Derek says, and then just want to add my own personal experience. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would echo much of what's been said, and I had a great deal of trust in her and her ability to manage a meeting in a room of people. We saw her do it on a regular basis and really appreciated the way she did it with kindness. Made me feel very welcome here on the board, was always extremely kind, good-humored, and just to add to what's been said, how much she'll be missed. And, you know, I was really struck at her services, how much her family and her friends and her parish will miss her, and just add that we will very much miss her on this board.
Ellen and I shared a great deal on a variety of topics over the years, carrying with it our many thoughts and opinions, on which some we agreed and some we did not. But rest assured, the discussions that ensued were always filled with warmth, kindness, and a true respect for each other. One thing I do know, in having served many years together with Ellen, is that her thoughtful, deliberate, and considerate process in her role as a board member, and most recently as the Chair, will be missed by this board and surely by me. Ellen, my friend, may you rest in peace.
Ellen was protective of this board, and on occasion, some of you will know, she demanded respect for the board. And she could do that because she earned respect for herself and for the board that she served so very well, and she will be missed.
I've only been on the board for about two years, so like Marcus, you know, I'm one of the newer members. You know, immediately she made me feel very welcome, she has a great sense of humor. Well, I hadn't known her for too, too long, she was always asking about my baby, it was born back in September, and I mentioned that to my wife, you know, but it was, it was nice to always have someone asking about that. I always felt included, I felt like she cared about me, not just as a board member, but also as, you know, a person and a dad and member of the community, so, yes, rest in peace, Ellen.
Ken, did you want... And I guess if, if people would like to, it would be an honor to have you join us in a moment of silence in memory and honor of Ellen. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ellen. Now, as Ken so effectively just pointed out to me, I should read the legalese to start our meeting. The meeting notice for Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 7:00 PM in Beverly City Hall of the Planning Board. This is an in-person meeting. Virtual access to the public will be available via Google Meet. The video link is on the agenda, which is on the city website, and this meeting will be livestreamed by BevCam. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, Section 40, adopted on March 29, 2023, this meeting of the City of Beverly Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend via remote participation may do so through the Google Meet information provided at the end of the agenda. And we have several people who have joined us already that way. So our first order of business, if we have any subdivision approval not required plans, do we have any?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Okay, we'll move to number two on the agenda, and this is a modification request, modification of site plan review number 165-24 for 50 Ball Street, also known as 181 Elliott Street, Cummings Center. The applicant is Beverly Commerce Park LLP. And so I think you're up to give a presentation of your application.
Can I get it to be the whole screen, or was this...
So we're working on this technically, for everyone in the room.
I'll start anyway. Good evening, my name is Michael Abani, I'm an architect with Cummings Properties. Thank you. I like to walk around and do this, you know. Understood. And with me this evening is Steve Drahasky, he's Senior Vice President with Cummings Properties and the General Manager at Cummings Center. Thank you for having us here this evening. We're here tonight, I won't spend a lot of time going through the history of the project, I think the staff notes pretty much... Okay, I think the staff notes summarized it pretty well. We've been here in the past to get this project approved, and we've also been before you to have a minor modification. We're seeking another very small modification to this project this evening. For background, we have gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals with this request, and they have approved it. We went to the Design Review Board last Thursday, and they shared with this board a recommendation, their recommendation of the changes. So to quickly to summarize the changes, we have two things that we'd like to change. We'd like to increase the number of units from 59 to 60 within the same footprint of the building, and we'd like to build a small two-story addition to the building, which I will share with you in one second, let me just get this thing going. Ken, how do we get going here? It's about 3 o'clock this afternoon, my computer died, my laptop died, and I had to rush to IT to get another one. So this one didn't have, the previous one was all set up and ready to go, with all the, the setup was compatible to this. This one, not so much. Wants to fight us. So what's interesting is... It's good looking guys, then. So how do I get it to cycle through then? Oh, there we go, okay. Sorry for the delay. I won't touch anything. I touched a button I shouldn't have touched. So just a quick recap, Cummings Center site, the red block here is where we're building the building. I hope everybody's had the chance to drive by and kind of see how far we've progressed. So the changes that we'd like to make...
So, excuse me, can I say, "would like to make," or have you made some of these changes already?
We can talk about that. We haven't built the addition. We've made some of the changes to the windows in anticipation of hopefully getting through this process, because we want to keep it moving, but the addition part has not been built, and the modifications inside the units have not been built. So we have made some window modifications, which I will share with you.
But just flag for what...
Oh, yeah, I'll show you. I'll show you what's happened. Yep, fair enough. So we previously, to kind of run through how we get from 59 to 60, previously granted, we had 11 units on the first floor. We've basically taken this one large single bedroom and one two-bedroom unit and turned it into two two-bedroom units, smaller, but a little more diverse. And that was kind of the part of the deal too, we've been working with our marketing team, we're trying to get a little more diversity inside, inside the building, diversity of the units. Second floor, 12 units, and it's the same stack, it's this one stack that pretty much got modified. 12 units, we took one and turned it into two. Third floor, again, took one, turned it into two. 12 units were previously granted, we made some of the units on the fourth floor larger, the two end units got larger on both sides and wound up dropping units, so we turned that into two, but in making these end units larger, we lost the two, the two smaller end units here. So kind of just rearranged some things. Fifth floor, same, same, same situation, got rid of the end units, made these other end units larger, and then turned that from one unit into two units. Now, let me go back a couple of steps here. That's kind of the idea, that was what we were looking at for the interior modifications going from 59 to 60.
So how many, how many of those additional one-bedroom units, it looks like you've created an additional three and then taken two away, is that the story?
Yep. So it goes from, the originally approved was five one-bedroom units and 54 two-bedroom units, and what we're proposing here is six and 54. So basically, we just added one more one-bedroom unit. It turns out to be a one-bedroom unit, the delta.
And made some of the, the other ones, units larger?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the, the addition that we're talking about is in this corner of the building here, and you'll see a little more of that, how that winds up getting executed. But what we did here was, again, to make some units a little larger, we expanded this unit on the first floor, so this unit right here became here, but just a little bigger, and then this unit here, a little sliver, they got an extra bonus from here. And the same thing happened on the second floor, just this, this unit, we didn't get an extra unit out of this proposed addition, we just expanded the two adjacent units to it. So if you go to the elevations, okay, so the top is what was previously approved, the bottom is what we're proposing to modify. Important to note, all the materials stayed the same, nothing changed, we went through this with the Design Review Board as well, and it was important to us, we didn't change the materials, not changing the quality, nothing. So what's changing on this particular north elevation is these window bays here. So we took out the Marriott balconies here, and wound up putting triples in. And here, Marriott balconies and wound up doing single units here, and Marriott balconies and did triples here. Again, this worked a little better with what was going on inside. So to answer your question, these modifications have been made because the windows are already Salt elevation, this is what was approved on the top, pros and modification here, you can see the addition here at the bottom was designed so that we could put a cover over the driveway here, which works kind of nice, but it kind of blends with all the rest of the building, it doesn't have much of a visual difference, I would say. What changes have happened here, we changed some of the window patterns, and again, not that the units in here and back of this, this one changed a little bit, we added more glass to it, we went from doubles to a triple there, again Marriott balcony to the triple there, Marriott balcony to the triples there, and added, in the green is the, where the proposed addition will go. West elevation, western-east elevations, again, these were previously approved, you can see between previously approved and the proposed, looked very similar, same with the east, looked very similar. The difference on the east is you'll see a little, that little, the addition here is 20 feet, so it'll stick out 20 feet, but again, it covers up the, the former driveway location. And what changed here on the elevations, we took the, actually, nothing changed there, really, those are doubles, those are doubles, so it wasn't a...
You took out the Julians on top.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I can see, I can't see it from here, but you're right. And then, and then that changed to a double, and that became, again, the proposed addition. What else changed? So here are some of the renderings here, again, from the, this would be from the southwest corner, looking across the property. Rest of the building, very similar to what we had proposed before, besides the window changes that I just explained. Here's the two-story addition in this corner. This is just a little higher, same view, but a little higher. This is from the southeast corner, where you'll be looking at it, this is up close kind of what the proposed addition would look like, and again, these are just to expand the two, the two units on each floor that are directly adjacent. Another modification that happened, the landscape plan changed a little bit, what you're seeing here is what was approved in the past, we made some minor tweaks to it, which, excellent, thank you. Much better. So some things that we did here, we reconfigured this island a little bit, we had some grading challenges here, so we reconfigured this island, which you'll see on the next slide, and we took out this wall and just regraded over here, so we didn't have to have that wall anymore. Loading dock, we tweaked that a little bit, added some more landscaping in there. So what you'll see here is what the end result was, this island here has that block wall that was removed here, was kind of repurposed over here, and we added some trees and a fence there to make it, which was really what the, when we went through the Design Review Board, that's what they were kind of hoping we would do, just to separate this property from the other property. That was the original intent, when we went back Thursday night, the Chair was happy with the way the landscape came out and appreciated that we took his advice and a lot of the things on his palette and kind of executed them here. So that was kind of, it's in a nutshell, the changes, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody wants to... Oh, one more thing, one more thing. I did have a meeting with the city engineer and Eric Bobber, and I don't remember what Eric Bobber's title is nowadays, maybe, I know he's in the DPW, Deputy DPW, and Lisa had no issue with the additional unit regarding city utilities.
Artificial turf.
What's that?
You forgot about the artificial turf.
Oh, oh my goodness, yes, the artificial turf. So that's another thing, so, thank you. I was trying to forget. One thing we did, we are considering is, and we have some of it down to see how it looks, instead of planting grass, we're going to consider artificial turf there. I've done a bunch of reading on it, and it seems that there's opportunity, there's some pros and cons, obviously. In this case here, hey, it could save a lot of water, saves pesticides, doesn't have to be maintained, you don't have to cut it, looks good all year round. That's our objective with it. I know the Design Review Board was saying, didn't feel great about it, but thought, okay, makes sense, I can see what you're after and why you're thinking about it, and just had asked us, and please correct me if I'm wrong, had asked us just to share with them some of the installation details, which we will do by their next meeting, so, thank you, I'm sorry about the turf.
So, so some of that is down as a test to see how it looks?
Yeah, yeah.
I happened to drive by there today, it's not an editorial comment, but it was sparkling nicely in the sun, okay, just to let you know. I'm going to follow Ellen's protocol here and see what members of the board have questions, comments, thoughts. Our goal here is to look at whether this is major or minor, and whether we can approve it or not tonight. Yes, Wayne?
Mark's hand beat mine into the air, so I'm going to defer to him.
Oh, Marcus, you had your hand up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
Is the microphone on? It's not easy. I'm not the only one with a microphone. Just had a question about how it looked with the other landscaping, already, already in with the other buildings, the surrounding areas, I think, yeah, just kind of general question about that, have you compared that contrastively?
And what we had proposed and what we're proposing now?
The artif, I'm sorry, the artificial turf.
Right.
I think you're asking, what does it look like compared to the rest of the landscaping throughout the Cummings Center?
I appreciate you, yes.
So it's a great question.
Yes.
I'm not sure there's a ton of grass at Cummings Center, I mean, Steve, you can chime in on if there's any grass. The landscape palette that we are using here, though, is very similar to what's in the rest of the park, so it comports with that. The, really, what, what we worked with, with the Design Review Board regarding the landscape was really just a separation of making this feel like a little enclave as opposed to part of the rest of the park, and while some of the landscape items are going to be the same, because that's what's in our palette, it's stuff that we had talked about with, with the Design Review Board and the Landscape Architect, who was very generous with his time in helping us kind of get to a point with it. And this is very similar, but for some of these changes, and the grass is a significant change, there is no grass theoretically, there isn't a ton of grass, there's some in front of Elliot Landing that we have, but other than that, there is, the site is not filthy with grass at this point in time. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Wayne?
I defer to our colleagues at DRB as far as these design changes go, and the, and the turf. My question is whether this is a major or minor, and to that question, I'd ask that you put up the southeast elevation once again?
Can you scroll that out just a little bit? Yeah, oh, that's good.
Could you discuss the analytics of that addition, the size and the shape, and what it's covering, and what it's for?
So there's a driveway under here that goes to the garage, and there's garage doors under here. So the thought process was, if we could use this as a protective weather shield to help this little driveway under there, keep as much weather out of the driveway as we could, that was the thought process. This, this addition from, from here to here, this face, so the east facade, 20 feet, this is 60 feet across, and then be 20 feet back, together, it's 1,200 square feet per floor. So 12 times 2 is 2,400, and that's what we had shared with you folks. So 12 times 2 is 2,400, and that's what we had shared with you folks.
So the footprint has increased by 1,200?
Correct, correct.
Square feet. And what is the overall square footage of the footprint?
That'll get it up to about 26.5. It was roughly 25,000 square feet before.
Okay. Thank you.
So maybe 5%.
George?
I was just going to follow back on the sort of landscaping conversation. Okay, sorry. I turned on my thing, but that doesn't help you at all, Ellen, over there, sorry. Just on the sort of landscaping question, for Marcus's point, the surrounding area is all driveway, right? There is some grass behind the 500 building. My daughter goes to school in the 600 building, there is some grass over there, but you're talking like hundreds of feet away, just to the extent that that helps anybody kind of conceptualize that.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah, George?
I also wanted to say thank you for talking to engineering so that I didn't have to count the bathrooms again like the last time we did this.
Thank you.
I have two questions. One doesn't have to do with whether or not it's major or minor. One has to do with the fact that you made changes, and they are coming to us, asking us to approve these changes as minor after the fact. I don't think this is the first time. And to me, I don't understand why the city isn't notified ahead of time that you have a desire to do that. Not necessarily as a courtesy, but because we approved these plans and, you know, and now you're making changes in the course of things. Now, the second part of my comment is, I don't think that these raise to the point of being major changes. I think it's, you know, a little less than 10% of the footprint for a specific purpose that seems to make some sense. You know, some other changes to landscaping, the addition of one unit, you know, gross, you know, things like that, don't seem to raise to that point. But I'm wondering why you did not come to the DRB, the planning board, anyone, before you actually constructed these changes?
Fair enough. I put the package together as quickly as I could, that's all I can say. We had, we had the concept, okay, we want to make some modifications. As you know, the project is moving. I had put, I think I submitted this, the first time I submitted it was in May, a couple of months ago. Again, project needs to keep moving. I have no other explanation, other than we put it together as quickly as we possibly could and got it here as quickly as we possibly could, without slowing the project down.
I mean, what I'm hearing is that you have an organization that is adept at making changes more than it's adept at notifying people about those changes. And so I would encourage you in the future to actually come to us if you're going to modify a project to, and not ask forgiveness and ask us to vote, to do something that, you know, if it was more serious, there'd be a cost to you if we were to say, this is major, and then have a hearing and all that sort of stuff.
Understood, understood. We're, we're definitely a little unorthodox in some ways, and we fly, and understood.
But what I'm asking is for you not to do that again.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah.
Don't mean to interrupt you, but I just would like, I guess, my fellow board members who are new to know that that admonition is not novel. That has been requested before, it was not complied with. And I guess you are willing to accept that if we don't approve these changes, that the cost of taking them down and starting over again is on you guys. I guess you accept that when you go ahead and make these moves. That's on you, I guess.
Fair enough.
I just would like to know, folks to know that they have been counseled about this before, about asking forgiveness rather than the permission of the board.
George?
I was just, was asking if you'd like a motion.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question.
Yep, I am asking that.
Motion to deem the modification request to site plan review number 165-2450 Balt Street, 181 Elliot Street applicant, or 181 Elliot Street Coming Center applicant Beverly Commerce Park, deem the modification request minor.
A second to that.
Wayne Miller seconds. Any discussion? Take a show of hands, who's vote? All those in favor? Opposed? It is unanimous. Yes, it's a minor modification. George?
I'll keep going, Ellen. Mr. Chair, motion to approve the modification request to site plan review number 165-2450 Balt Street, 181 Elliot Street Coming Center applicant Beverly Commerce Park LLC with the following conditions: All previous conditions of approval from the planning board decision dated June 20, 2024, and the minor modification decision dated January 16, 2025 are still applicable, including conditions contained in the comment letters submitted by various department heads, boards, and commissions included with these decisions; and two, that the condition in the letter of recommendation from the City of Beverly Design Review Board dated July 11, 2025 be adhered to. The letter of recommendation is attached here too and incorporated here and by reference. And just for context for everyone that was, as discussed about the artificial turf, going back to the DRB with some details on that.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Flannery. All those in favor? Opposed? Again, it's unanimous.
Thank you all. I hope, I hope it cools off in here before it's time to go. Thank you.
All right. So next is our public hearings. Do I hear motion to recess for public hearings?
Some move?
Move by Ms. Flannery, is her second? Seconded by Judy Ashkanaz, Ashkanaz, sorry, Judy. All those in favor? Opposed, it's unanimous, we're moving into public hearing. Our first public hearing of the evening is to continue the hearing for the open space residential design site plan review application number 12-24, 184 and 186 Hart Street, CS Hart LLC applicants. Yes, Griffin?
Good evening, Bob. Griffin, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Carvalos.
What's here? There it is.
Over my left shoulder. We were here on July 2nd, we made a little presentation about the proposed plan. The proposed OSRD site plan derives from an initial site plan that the planning board approved. We had gone through the yield plan calculations. It also derived from a conservation commission, ANRAD, regarding the wetland delineation, the wetland resources on the property. It involves constructing five new houses, renovating one house, and tearing down and replacing another house on the property. At the last meeting, I think we wanted to provide additional time for the engineering department to respond to the plan set and the revisions that we made at the end of June. And I think they've done that. We had some correspondence with them earlier today. I think their comments were relatively minor. I can run through them if you're interested. But at this point, I think we've satisfied all the city questions that we've received and be happy to address any questions that you have.
Unfortunately, the conservation commission still has not provided their report. They meet on the 23rd. I know they've already done it for the initial filing, but by code, they have 45 days to provide a report back for the OSRD. They meet again on, I think, on the 23rd, and they're taking it up at that meeting. And then we'll be able to resolve this at the August meeting. Unfortunately, it's in our, it's in the code, then there's nothing...
I think they did reply, though. I think that they submitted, you know, at the beginning of June, that they, you know, their only comment was, hey, you know, you're, we're working in the buffer zone, you guys need to come in for a permit. And we acknowledge that, and we will do that, but that happens after.
And I'm sure that's exactly what they're going to say this time. But unfortunately, codified in the OSRD ordinance, they have 45 days to review the final.
I think they've reviewed it, I think they've commented on it, but fair enough.
And, you know, at this point, you know, I think we'll be reticent to make any decision without having what the board sees as a requirement to get that, even if it's identical to what it is you had before.
Fair enough.
So, is, is there, is there anything that you feel that you want to call out in the comments that have come in or received? And before, we see if there's any member of the public, that were not members of the public at the meeting the last time, if they have any questions or they want to say anything?
I'm certainly interested in any public comments that are out there. I don't necessarily see the need to highlight any of the comments that we've received and addressed thus far, but again, I'm happy to address whatever questions the board has.
Yes, George?
I just had a question from the engineering memo. She'd asked about the 10-foot sidewalk easement, who's responsible for maintenance? Was that resolved, or what's the answer there?
Yeah, the engineering department is good with that. They did not understand about the weaving of the sidewalk inside and outside of the wall. So they didn't want it, they just wanted a better explanation as to what that easement meant. So everything is resolved.
Great. And to answer the question, the city would be responsible for maintaining the easement, just like the other sidewalks on Hart Street.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Wayne?
Just a quick comment. I just want to express my feeling that I'm sorry that you incurred this delay. This is not something that we would have wished for. We don't, despite sometimes appearances, ever wish to delay a project. And we certainly regret that this is delayed.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Wayne. We certainly were hopeful at our last meeting that we'd be able to get all of the comment letters and required feedback in on time, so. Or they're, they're still within their time purview, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, how about from the public? Is there...
Real quick, Mr. Griffin, do you have any draft HOA documents or any more information about the open space management plan as to who will be taking stewardship of the open space?
No, our intention on the open space is to offer it to Green Belt. And in fact, we have had some conversation with Green Belt to date. Green Belt has said that they don't really want to engage in detailed discussions until after the city's process is complete. So we'll continue to make that offer, and for some reason, Green Belt decides that they don't want to take it. Then we will establish, you know, an association amongst the homeowners or offer perhaps the conservation commission or something else. But it seems to make the most sense for Green Belt to take it, given their adjacent land holdings.
Okay. Set? Anyone from the public wish to address this?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, real quick.
Yes, George.
Ken had two questions there, I feel like we got an answer to one. Is there an answer on the HOA? Do we need to see, is that part of the process here? We see those documents, or is that...
It has been, it has been for previous OSRDs. And it will be more of a, I'd have to look at the previous conditions, but there's definitely conditions in there about receiving HOA docs prior to XYZ. I'll have that prepared for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we can get you some information on that.
Is HOA review for the board or for the planning department?
Hi, Miranda Samasco, also representing the applicant. And to respond to the HOA questions, one of the open issues here, which you just heard Bob describe, is how, in fact, the open space will be handled. So what we'd like to suggest here is that there be a condition for presentation of the HOA documents to the satisfaction of the staff prior to issuance of the building permit.
And that's to give you time to determine whether or not the HOA would have something about that parcel or not?
Correct, because I think that will determine whether we have, you know, among other questions, we will have one or two homeowners associations and how they will be described. We're also going to have to presumably come back to either this board or Concom with a proposed conservation restriction. So I think what I've done in the past is sort of bundle those items together for sign-off.
And subdivision-wise, it's going to end up being an A&R, correct? Because it's not a, we're not building any roads or infrastructure. So is this going to be A&R, is there going to be a definitive plan with this?
I was thinking that we would be using the OSRD plan.
That's a, that's a site plan, so there's usually a definitive, there's usually, there's a subdivision that's usually associated with it.
I think we need a subdivision, because we don't have qualifying A&R frontage for all of the lots, do we? No. So we'd have to be modified into a subdivision.
I can think of OSRD projects in the city that have recorded an OSRD site plan endorsed by the planning board.
Okay.
But I wouldn't hazard to try to be an attorney, so.
Okay, we'll talk about that offline.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone online? That wants to speak? Anyone have their hand up?
Is it anyone online?
I don't see anyone. That being said, since we're still waiting for the Concom, and perhaps some clarification or some movement on some other issues, I'd welcome a motion to continue this to our next meeting.
Mr. Beckwith?
Ellen?
I move to continue this public hearing of OSRD site plan review application number 12-24 at 184-186 Hart Street to our meeting of August 19, 2025.
Is there a second? Seconded by Wayne Miller. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, next on the agenda.
Mr. Beckwith?
Yes.
I just make a request from, we have this air conditioner behind us, which makes it a tad bit harder to hear anything happening there over. We can hear you fine, but sometimes it's hard to hear over here and here. So if people can just speak up, that would be helpful.
You know, if it's any consolation, it's not doing anything in the room anyway, so.
Yeah, it appears to be doing nothing, except making it hard for us to hear.
Mr. Gomes, that's why I requested you to speak up, because we couldn't hear you.
Perhaps we turn it off and the meeting will end a little shorter, sooner. No, we would never. Next, number five on the agenda is continuation of the public hearing for definitive plan of subdivision for 14 Greenwood Avenue, 14 Greenwood Beverly LLC. The applicant, represented by Thomas J. Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to speak when you were talking about Ellen Hutchinson, but if you would allow me, I'd like to say a couple of words about her. I had the honor and the privilege of representing clients before her as a planning board member at her very first meeting, as well as as vice chairman and chairman. And she was a true pro. We could argue the fine points of the law up here quite strenuously and disagree, and then immediately go to, just to neutral or to humor. So she was, she was quite a lady, and I feel very honored to have been able to appear before her as chairman. Switching gears to the project here on Greenwood Ave. Just a quick overview, as you know, this is basically a creation of one lot. It started out as a creation of two additional pork chop lots back, and it was approved in October of 2024. The neighbors appealed that, and we came to an accommodation with the neighbors and modified the plan to make it just one pork chop lot. And so, and we got that, we came back before this board on... And so, and we got that, we came back before this board on, and got approval for that in March of this year. This project has also obtained an order of conditions and approval by the Beverly Conservation Commission that was accomplished on June 2nd. If you recall, at your last meeting, Bob Griffin went through in quite some detail the plan submitted, as well as the waivers, but we were not able to proceed to a vote that night because we didn't have comments from the engineering department and the Board of Health, the Health Department. Since that meeting, we have had comments from both of them, and I believe that the Board of Health basically had no comment, and the engineering department did have some comments that were reviewed and by Bob Griffin as the engineer, and we basically reached agreement on all those. So the end result is that the Ken Claussen's staff report does a very nice job of setting out all of the conditions, all of which we are in favor of. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have on that, but that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to take a second and talk about the conditions relating to the engineering department that?
I'll let Bob do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, and I'll just sort of summarize Lisa Chandler's comments, but first, she asked for a wetland crossing detail. You might recall that we're going to install, you can stay on that one, there's a new sewer line that's going to serve number twelve and number fourteen Greenwood Avenue. It comes up, it crosses this little stream here, and so she's asked for a little detail of what does that, what does that crossing look like? We're going to make sure that the pipe is down below frost, and we're going to restore the stream to its current condition, so that's what that detail will show, and we'll provide that prior to, providing you my laws to endorse. She asked for a detail of the junction manhole. That sewer line continues up, goes past the common driveway, goes on to this number six Greenwood property, and this point connects with this point over here, and there's a junction manhole where the new sewer ties into an existing sewer line, and so we're going to provide her a little detail of how those, how that junction is made and how the valves are configured. She asked that we not use plastic water mains, instead use water services, I mean, and so we had shown a plastic water service, and we're going to revise the plan to call for a copper water service. She asked us to acknowledge that we'll be paying the required City of Beverly water demand fees, and of course, we're, you know, doing everything by the book, so we're paying whatever's required from the water demand point of view. She asked that we provide easements of the water in sewer lines crossing onto neighboring properties, so again, this sewer line goes on to number six, and there's a water line that goes on to number eighteen, I think. So we'll provide those easements. She also reminded us of the need to meet city requirements for all piping materials, erosion controls, and to submit stormwater reports by December thirty-first annually. So we're, of course, comfortable with all of those issues.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just would like to reiterate that those would all be conditions of approval, that, so that we're not going to do all that stuff prior to approval. We would suggest that you approve it with those conditions, and prior to, you know, the permit issuing for this, it would, all those things would be taken care of with, through the engineering department and the planning department.
Understood. Any other questions from members of the board? Members of the public? Any members of the public here? We'd like to talk about the fourteen Greenwood Avenue issue.
I just have one thing.
Oh, yes.
Normally, a subdivision is approved with a covenant and then a performance bond. The board can discuss now whether they think a covenant and performance bond is necessary for this project, so when they come back for an endorsement, it can be endorsed without a covenant, if that's the will of the board. There's no road being constructed here, there's no public utilities being constructed here. I don't know that we need to have a covenant and performance bond for this subdivision, but it's up for your all's discussion.
Do you have a position on that, Mr. Alexander?
I agree with Mr. Claussen that this is, this, as I think I explained before, this is, it comes through the subdivision control law, but it's not really a subdivision, but there needs to be a vehicle to go from special permit, or in some cases, variance, to an actual plan that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So until maybe ten years ago, it was by A and R, but the law changed, and we have to go through basically taking the subdivision control and just wavering everything, so that you don't have, you know, the regular subdivision covenants and bonds govern, you know, that the building of the roadway and putting in the curbs and lights and all that kind of stuff, and this has none of that.
Am I mixing up? I don't believe I am. Projects here, but in terms of the improvements of the private way, all the way up, and then the maintenance agreement for that road afterwards, that you've come to with the group of neighbors slash abutters?
Yes.
Right? And the putting of funds towards that, I think that's part of your piece as well.
Yes, we've agreed to put ten thousand dollars towards a maintenance fund for that, yes.
So do you have written documents with the neighbors on that?
We have a settlement agreement, which, and also a draft maintenance agreement that has been approved by the neighbors through their attorney, but we haven't received all the signatures, because there's a number involved there, but the whole thing's been agreed to and.
But it's been agreed to?
Yes.
To me, that's sort of akin to what we're looking at, would be looking at doing publicly, but you're doing that privately, since it's private road, et cetera.
Correct.
So that's underway?
Yeah.
And if there's any concern about the work not being performed, the fire department's not going to approve a building permit until this road is passable to the standards as shown on the plan.
Right.
That's along the lines of what I was trying to get at and put on the record, is that there are protections in place for the neighbors, and there's, you know, every indication from you, the applicant, that everything's in place, agreed to, and moving forward to provide those assurances, you know, back and forth, I mean, with everyone mutually. Does anyone have any other questions or thoughts about whether or not we should require covenant and a bond? Personally, I think in this situation, it's not, it's not a necessity. So, but Wayne, did you, you're raising your hand?
I would, but at first, I'd like to hear from Ellen.
I don't believe it's necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I don't either. I was also going to say that neighbors and abutters initially expressed real concerns about this project, as we know, and through, they sued us, and through due diligence, it would appear that these concerns have been addressed. Can you assure us at this juncture that the neighbors and abutters' concerns have been assuaged?
Yes, we were very closely with them, a lot of communication with them, they, and they, you know, signed off on the application for the Conservation Commission application, so, yeah, no, they're all on board with this. You know, I mean, at the end of the day, it really produces a terrific amount of improvement for them as well, and for the city, because it provides a lot more safety on that roadway and how it operates. I mean, presently, the fire department is on record with this board that that is unsafe. I would, it's public record, I would not, if I was a neighbor up there, would not want that being provided to the insurance company.
And one of the potential conditions of approval says that the applicant should make a good faith effort to notify the abutters of the construction schedule as it progresses. How would you do that most efficaciously, I guess?
Well, Ben Carlson, who's one of the principals on that, is in almost daily contact with the neighbors. He works quite closely with them, so we would, we would certainly be happy to provide mailings to them, but I think that that's unnecessary, because they are, everybody has everybody's phone number and discusses everything amongst the group.
Thank you. Okay, and once more, in terms of the public, can you pull up online to see? Any hands raised? Nope? Okay, that being said, I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by George, seconded by Ellen. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, eight to nothing. The meeting is, the public meeting is closed. Now, how about, the question comes to the matter itself. I'd welcome a motion. Yes, George?
I move to grant the waivers from Chapter three seventy-five subdivision of land, Article three of the City of Beverly Code as listed on the plans for fourteen Greenwood Avenue definitive subdivision plan, fourteen Greenwood Avenue, applicant fourteen Greenwood Beverly LLC. And for context, for everyone that's in the staff report, we're, as you know, we're dealing with like thirty-four different waivers, so this would be clumping them together based on where they appear in the code.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
That was a motion. Is there a second? Yes, seconded by Ellen. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Marcus, did you have your hand up? Seven, eight to nothing. Okay, those waivers are approved.
We got more waivers.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Three, four, five, yeah.
Yep.
I move to grant the waivers from Chapter three seventy-five subdivision of land, Article four of the City of Beverly Code as listed on the plans for fourteen Greenwood Avenue definitive subdivision plan, fourteen Greenwood Avenue, applicant fourteen Greenwood Beverly LLC.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ellen. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to nothing, and the affirmative?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to grant the waivers from Chapter three seventy-five subdivision of land, Article five of the City of Beverly Code as listed on the plans for fourteen Greenwood Avenue definitive subdivision plan, fourteen Greenwood Avenue, fourteen Greenwood Beverly LLC.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's eight to nothing in the affirmative. And ladies and gentlemen, in the audience and at home, at our last meeting, we went over each one of the thirty-four waivers, one by one, to discuss them, get feedback, understand them, and at that time, there was no concerns raised by any member of the public or by members of the board, and so we've just approved those waivers now as part of the process of moving this application forward. Yes, George?
Motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan for fourteen Greenwood Avenue, applicant fourteen Greenwood Beverly LLC, subject to the following conditions. One, the conditions of this approval and any waivers of subdivision rules and regulations shall be set forth on the plan to which the conditions or waivers apply, or shall be set forth in a separate instrument, such as the decision letter, which should be referenced on the plan. This shall occur prior to plan endorsement by the board. Two, work shall conform to the project plans as named herein, attached, and incorporated here too. Three, any requests for changes or modifications to the approved project or conditions set forth herein shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval. Four, incorporating the comments from Captain Jacob Crayling, City of Beverly Fire Department in the Open Gov, Online Permitting System. A, fire access plan is approved, as long as all points along the access are fourteen-foot minimum and allow fire apparatus access. B, the new house will be built with approved residential sprinkler system. C, the fire, Department of, the Office of Fire Prevention encourages all builders to employ wildfire-resistant construction methods and landscaping. This home is within the highest wildfire risk area of Beverly. Five, incorporating the comments from Lisa Chandler, P.E., City Engineer, in the comment letter dated July 2nd, 2025, incorporated herein and attached here too. A, a detail for forest main wetland crossing is to be provided on the plans prior to endorsement by the board. B, a detail for the proposed junction and valve manhole is to be provided on the plans prior to endorsement by the board. C, water services should be copper per City of Beverly standards. Plastic water lines are not permissible in the City of Beverly. D, water demand fees are to be confirmed and paid with the City of Beverly Engineering Office prior to the issuance of a building permit for a new home at the new twelve Greenwood Avenue property. E, neighbor agreements for both water and sewer extension easements are to be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit for a new home, for the new home at the new twelve Greenwood Avenue property. F, all materials installed must be in accordance with the City of Beverly rules and regulations. G, during construction phase activities, excavation and earthwork shall be done in compliance with erosion control rules and regulations. Open areas of disturbance in soil or material stockpile shall be protected from waterborne and windborne erosion, and shall not have any negative impact on surrounding privately-owned or municipally-owned property. H, operation and maintenance for the private stormwater management facilities on twelve and fourteen Greenwood Avenue is due annually to the engineering department by December thirty-first of every calendar year, and commencement of work acknowledges that noncompliance with this requirement is subject to violations and applicable fees and fines. This reporting requirement is also valid for all construction-related activities. Six, all ways shown on the project plans as named herein, attached, and incorporated here too, shall be completed and installed within two years of the date of approval. Seven, pursuant to Section three seventy-five dash twenty A of the Beverly subdivision regulations, lots shall be prepared and graded in such a manner that development of one shall cause no detrimental damage to another new or existing lot. Eight, the engineering department requires delivery of AutoCAD as-built drawings upon completion of the building and utility work. These drawings shall be delivered in PDF form, format generated directly from the electronic AutoCAD files. These drawings shall be delivered prior to the sale or installation of the required water meters. And nine, that the applicant should make a good faith effort to notify the abutters of the construction schedule as it progresses through the construction of the buildings, lots, lots, and work in the right of web.
He still has oxygen, ladies and gentlemen. The one thing that I heard, and I could have misheard it, is in number seven, you used the word damage instead of drainage on it, minor point, but just.
I am happy to amend, I, it's a little hot in here from my reading comprehension, so apologies.
Okay, great. Seconded motion. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion passes eight to nothing. That's it, congratulations. Okay, now we're continuing on to our next piece. Zero Tresk Lane, and we'll give a second for the applicants to file in and triple the size of the number of people in the room. Did you need a second? Well, while we're, while we're getting ready for the Zero Tresk Lane hearing, we're just going to take a minute to do everything, so I'm going to call it. I'd welcome a motion for a quick recess. Yes? Is there seconds? Seconded by Nate. All those in favor? Opposed? Moving vote of eight to nothing. Moving vote of eight to nothing.
Yeah.
And we have Miranda Gooding here to, Samasco, I'm very sorry.
That's okay. You won't be the first or the last.
The heat. Oh, the heat.
I know.
So if you could make, guide us through your presentation, I think the first order of business, just to bring people up to speed, will be a traffic simulation that was requested by Mr. Miller, and then a look at the internal traffic flow, and then a review of some of the mitigation that is being proposed. The applicant would like to address a couple of those for us, and then input from the public. And at that point, hopefully, ladies and gentlemen, we will be 30 seconds before 10 o'clock this evening. In the heat, I think that the target is to have 10 o'clock as the outside time to be able to adjourn our meeting. So we have a little bit of business after this hearing to attend to. So if we could look through about an hour and a half or so, that would be helpful. All right? So, thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, members of the board, Miranda Samasco on behalf of the applicant. This is, believe it or not, our ninth public hearing on the project. Our last appearance was April 30th, and you might recall that Rebecca did a full presentation of both her original, it was traffic assessment and study, as well as a focus on the particular elements of mitigation that are proposed in terms of traffic improvements, safety improvements, and TDM measures. And she walked us through all of that. We also heard from the board's peer reviewer, Jeff Dirk, during that meeting. And at the conclusion of that meeting, we identified a couple of things to come back at the next meeting. One, as Mr. Beckwith said, is to present the traffic simulations. Rebecca will do that. And we also have a presentation concerning the internal circulation on the site off of Trask Lane, the relationship between Duck Pond Road, the proposed new driveway, and the access off of Manor Drive through Apple Village. So we'll address those and then do the mitigation. And I think that we should have time for a good discussion and get us out before we expire, for sure. A couple of things have happened since our last meeting. I passed out to members a copy of the MIPA certificate that was issued by the state on June 13th, and they basically have concluded their review of the project and determined, based on the final environmental impact report, that the project complies with their regulations and is ready to be permitted at the state level, which is mass DOT, which happens well after MIPA. We also received our final vote from the Parking and Traffic Commission with respect to the project. And I believe members of the board have that decision, as well as the proposed conditions. On July 1st, we received our order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And earlier today, we filed a complete revision set of the plans incorporating comments, with the exception of the, we filed selective architectural plans because, believe it or not, with the buildings, nothing changed, except for the addition of the commercial space in one of the buildings. So instead of burying everybody with five pounds of paper for the architectural drawings, we submitted five clearly marked change pages. And hopefully, we can certainly supply the whole set if everybody needs it, but we think that this is more prudent and easier to review, actually. But full new civil plans, full new landscape plans, full concept plans for the Trask Lane signage and striping, and signage plans, I believe, and the architectural plan. So hopefully, we've incorporated everybody's comments, and it can be reviewed cumulatively now before our next meeting, or shortly thereafter.
So that being said, since you filed them today, and members of the board haven't had a chance to see them.
Of course.
Members of the public, obviously, haven't had a chance to see them. At our next meeting on the 19th, perhaps it would make some sense to begin that meeting with a presentation from you on those five sheets and the changes, as minor or major as they may be, so that everyone can see exactly what they are. And that speculative comments on those, actually, we can hold on those. I'm just saying this, people can dive into what they want to with, you know, but we'll try to stay on topic for tonight. And there'll be a time to be able to discuss those things more thoroughly when we've all had a chance to see what they are. Okay? Does that make sense to everyone? Yeah. Okay?
Okay. I think that is a good place to turn it over to Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Just a quick introduction, so we have it on the record.
Just gonna slide this back so it's not on top of me. Oh.
You got it?
There we go. Perfect. Share screen. So as, just to introduce myself, I'm Rebecca Brown from Greenman Peterson. We are the traffic consultants on the project. I think we've kind of already covered what our agenda for tonight will be, with the simulations, walking you through some of the internal traffic circulation, and then kind of a recap of the mitigation and the changes that we've had based on our coordination with Parking and Traffic Commission at our last meeting. So I will share my screen with you. So the first thing, actually, that I'm going to share with you is the simulations. So what we were asked to do, oh, is that on your end? That's okay. That's on your end. What we were asked to do was to prepare some simulations of the Dodge Street corridor. There were a lot of questions based on the plans that we had initially shared with you about how Dodge Street was going to work at the Route 128 ramps with all of the traffic coming off from the northbound ramp, free flowing, and with backups that people mentioned at the Conan Street intersection, that sometimes those can go all the way back beyond the ramp, and how would people get off when that is the case. So we've put together some simulations. The first one I'm going to show to you is the no-build condition. So this is really just more for verification of what we do actually see out there for issues. I will zoom in on different sections, so you will be able to see this a lot better. I know it looks very small right now, but I will zoom in on it while it is playing. So this is kind of starting at 7:15 in the morning. You can see these kind of little white dots moving across the screen. Those represent vehicles moving along Route 128. And this area right here is Dodge Street, down to the Henry's intersection here, and then up at the top of the screen here, we can see Conan Street and the Shopping Plaza here, where Shaw's is located. And I'm going to run this actually a little bit faster than real time, just so it progresses a little bit quicker. But if it looks too fast, feel free to kind of slow me down. But some of the things that we start to see as we progress the timeline a little bit later in the morning, to about 7:30, you can start to see the backups that occur on Route 128 itself, that start to kind of impact traffic on the main road as cars are getting on and off. The other thing that you can see.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Could you clarify, is this present day, or is this post-build?
This is a pre-build condition, yes. So this is what you're seeing out there with existing traffic conditions. Yep. And you can see down at the Henry's intersection, traffic starts to back up here. Every now and then, you'll see a car, one of these blue cars that wants to turn left onto Long Meadow Road will get stuck there for a little bit. And then you'll see some traffic back up and onto the highway during that time period. And then you can also see the backups onto Cabot Street in that area. And you can start to see here that there is a little bit of backup that's occurring from Long Meadow, starting to get back onto the highway here, that will increase. So we're a little after 7:30 now. This is kind of, you can start to see the traffic is backing up coming off the ramp from Dodge Street. This is the ramp here that currently operates as a yield condition that we're proposing to have free flowing. So you can see here, this is starting to back up now with that 7:30 time period. And Route 128 southbound is significantly backed up at that point. Now we're at about 7:35. You can see traffic is starting to back, from Dodge Street, back onto the highway here. And now we're starting to get that wraparound that occurs on the Route 128 northbound off-ramp there, starting to come back around the corner. And then on the southbound on-ramp now, you're starting to see that Route 128 southbound has backed up enough that it's backing up the on-ramp traffic as well in the morning time period. In the morning, there is not as much volume headed north onto Dodge Street here as there is in the afternoon time period. That's when you get the heavier backups here. But you can definitely see there is some backup here that's occurring from the shopping center coming back, not to the point where it passes by the highway, but definitely starting to back up there. And I'll zoom this out a little bit more, so you can kind of see the total. And I'm going to advance this just a little bit forward, so you can kind of see as time progresses. So as we're starting to get closer to 8 o'clock, the on-ramp starts to clear out here, but you can see the off-ramp from Dodge Street is still heavily backed up onto the highway at that point. Oh, no worries. And then just kind of advancing a little bit more. You can kind of see that now we're at a little after 8, and that queue is finally starting to dissipate a little bit coming off of Dodge Street ramp to head southbound. So that's kind of the no-build in the morning. Now I'm going to switch to the no-build in the afternoon, which you see the same type of thing for traffic coming off the northbound ramp and heading south towards the Henry's intersection in the afternoon. But one of the things that you also see in the afternoon is that we'll start to see the Cabot Street, or excuse me, the Conan Street intersection backing up here, starting to impact traffic. So this is about 4:30. Not too bad yet, but it's about to start looking pretty bad. So now we're a little bit past 4:30, and you can already see cars are starting to back up here from the Conan Street intersection. You can see these starting to queue back here, well beyond the on-ramp. And then just to kind of go down, you can see, same issue that we were seeing previously with this backing up from the Henry's intersection back onto the ramp. And you can start to see how people are, as this queue backs up, people are struggling to get off that ramp and get around the traffic. And I can zoom in on that a little bit more. So I think this is pretty representative of what, I think actually it was Ellen that had described this at our last meeting, that as you're coming off this ramp, it can be very difficult to get all the way across to make the left turn onto Conan Street because the queue is blocking. Yep. So that is definitely representative of what we see here. So now I'm going to open up our build condition, and this will be build with the mitigation in place that we are proposing. So that includes the signal timing improvements that are proposed at the Conan Street intersection and the Shopping Plaza, as well as down at the Henry's intersection. It also includes, I'll stop this for just a second, so we can zoom in a little bit. It also includes here, at the off-ramp, that now this off-ramp coming from Route 128 northbound onto Dodge Street is going to come into a free-flow condition, into their own lane here. In between the two ramps here, vehicles will have the opportunity to make lane changes if necessary. So anyone who, for example, wants to get off this ramp, turn around and go back southbound on Route 128, as we know a lot of people do, particularly in the morning, as people are headed to work, they would be able to stay in this outer lane to do so. If they wanted to continue onto Dodge Street northbound, they would also be able to stay in this outer lane, and they could continue straight through and continue onto Dodge Street. The only lane change that would need to occur for people who are coming off that ramp would be if they want to go to Conan Street. They would have to, that's you, Ellen, yep. They would need to change lanes. Similarly, for traffic coming up Dodge Street, rather than it opening to two lanes right in this area near the access road, it will remain one lane a little bit further until you get past the off-ramp. So anyone who wants to turn onto Conan Street here would remain in their lane. Same thing with anyone who wants to continue north on Dodge Street, they would also remain in their lane. So the only people who would need to change lanes and move to the right would be those people coming northbound on Dodge Street that want to go southbound on Route 128. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. And I know you were discussing this in the last meeting. That was the one I missed. That was my mullin' rule, but I watched the video. I know there's a lot of discussion about the weaving sort of pattern there. And I know you were kind of describing the level of service that currently exists on that ramp versus the projected level of service, I think, of the weave condition.
Of the weaving, yep.
Can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah. So that ramp operates at a level of service F under the build conditions with the additional traffic that would be generated by the project. When we change that to a weaving condition, it would operate at a level of service B.
Do you happen to know what it is, no-build? Like, current?
I believe it's E, but like on the cusp of E to F, where only a few vehicles kicks it over to a level of service F, because that was one of the things that Parking and Traffic actually asked us to look at, was how many units can you get before that goes?
And then I just follow up there. You mentioned, essentially, the vast majority of people would be able to stay in the lane they're in, but you do have the Elens who need to get over to Conan Street. You have the people who need to get onto 128 southbound. Like, what portion of that traffic is moving, is having to provide, like, perform some sort of weave maneuver there roughly?
Yeah, sure. I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head. I know it's relatively low for the Dodge Street off-ramp going over to Conan Street, like, under 50 vehicles. Going the other way, coming up Dodge Street, going towards the Dodge Street on-ramp is closer to 100 vehicles.
Okay. I mean, I would think that would be a relatively common move, but.
It's in those ranges, but, yeah.
Ken looks like he needs to weigh in here.
Yeah. Can you scroll up a little bit? Because it looks like, and I want to just clarify this, that that's the only place for them vehicles to turn around. And I just wanted to spell that beyond the ramps, there are still places for vehicles to...
Correct. They can still continue to make lane changes up in here.
Yeah.
Yep. Correct. Yeah. Obviously, someone who wants to get onto the southbound ramps coming from Dodge Street, they've got to do it before they hit this point. But if somebody is coming off the ramp headed to Conan Street, they have a little bit more space to make those lane changes.
Right. But also the people who are hypothetically doing that move just took their life in their hands in getting off 128 at that particular exit in the first place with the weave that already exists on the highway. So I'll just leave that out there.
So I'm actually going to jump to the PM first, only because we're talking about this area. And that's where you see the biggest difference is in the PM. So I'll bring this down a little bit. So this is in the PM time period. And with this, we have implemented signal timing changes at the Conan Street intersection here that allow the traffic to flow much better coming northbound, so that we don't get those heavy backups that occur all the way back past the ramps, which allows people to actually come off those ramps a lot better and make those lane changes. So now we're looking at that 4:30 time period, and, you know, we weren't seeing much in the afternoon at 4:30 anyway. You're starting to see a little bit of queuing here, but nothing coming back beyond the ramps yet. So I'm going to advance it a little bit. So here's the 4:38. That was where we started to see the queues come beyond the ramps. And you can see here, they're not doing that now. The traffic is clearing through that intersection, so that vehicles are able to continue off those ramps. And you can kind of see down here on the bottom of the page as well, that the off-ramp onto Dodge Street southbound is not backing up based on the signal timing improvements at the Henry's intersection.
Is it too complex for us to, for you to just briefly explain what the timing implementation is here that you've proposed? I mean, is it longer, shorter? What is it? Because, you know, it's the miracle of computers, and plug it in, and it can do whatever you want it to do.
Yep.
To show, or, you know, what is the methodology that you've used on the signal timing that has alleviated this?
Yeah, sure. So I can actually bring up the signal timings and show those if you want that level of detail of comparison.
Will it take a couple minutes?
The files. It won't take me very long at all, actually. Let's see. I'll just have to open up the sync crew.
We're entering the day and age of AI, so I think it's good to actually walk through the stuff a little bit.
Yeah. Whoa. So I apologize, the program's a little slow to open. So right now, I've got the, actually, I'll go to the PM first, since that's the one we're talking about. So this is the build with PM conditions here. So looking at the timings. So this is kind of showing you on the bottom of the page what we're looking at for timing. So we're running this in the future conditions with 123-second cycle length, and I'll open up for you the no-build one as well, so you can see what that one looks like. Hopefully, I can get them side by side for you. It's going slow. Sorry. I'm just going to pause that, so it'll stop hogging all my space. For some reason, it's not letting me select the intersection right now. I think it's a little bit frozen up. So there's the build with improvements. The no-build file's not liking me right now. But essentially, what we're doing is re-optimizing the timing of the intersection. So during certain times of the day, certain movements need more green time. In the afternoon, for example, that northbound movement on Dodge Street needs a lot more green time than what it is currently getting. So we have increased the green time that is allocated in that evening time period to be able to get more traffic through there more efficiently. And it would definitely be beneficial if I could get this to show, but for some reason, the no-build file is freezing up.
When was the last time these signals were optimized?
I don't know about the Cabot and Conan, or the Conan and Shopping Plaza ones, but I know the ones coming off, like, the Elliott Street ramps and everything, those were re-timed during COVID to be more efficient, basically reducing down the minimum green times and everything, so that the signals would turn over a lot faster, and reducing down the maximum green times as well. So it's been a while since those ones have been re-timed. I don't know for the Conan Street ones.
But we're talking about re-time and a different flow with other mitigations. So it's the combination of the two, so.
Yeah. I'm going to try reopening that file.
And then if that doesn't work, then let's move on to the next. So I apologize for...
Yeah. Sorry about that, that it's...
Hey, I'll take responsibility for the computer glitch, okay?
Oh, this is promising. There we go. All right. So reopening worked. All right. So right now, it's running on 164-second cycle length. So it takes a really long time right now for it to come back to the green. So what we're proposing to do is to actually reduce that down to only 123 seconds in the evening, so that it can come back to the green a lot faster to clear people out. When you have a lower cycle length, it tends to reduce down the queues for that reason, because if you're having to wait longer, the queue builds up longer. So that's one of the things that we're doing for the evening time period, is reducing down that cycle length. We're also allocating a higher percentage of the green time to that northbound movement to clear it out, so that it won't back up onto the ramps.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. No problem. All right. So I'll restart this. So I'm going to advance it a little bit further through, so you can see here, now we're, I'll go back a little. We're right about at 5 o'clock, a little bit after, and still these queues are all clearing out just fine. We don't really see any of that backup occurring. Kind of going south down to the Henry's intersection, this is clearing out well for the Dodge Street southbound movement, so that it's not backing up and coming back up onto the ramps as well. So that's kind of the evening. I'll go a little bit further past 5. Whoops. There we go. Yeah. So you can see around 5:15, this does start to back up, almost to the ramp, but not quite there. I think I went over the little blip. And this is with the additional traffic that's generated by the project, plus the improvements in place. And now I'll jump to the morning, so you can see what that one looks like. And really, the morning, we don't see as much of the issues, as I said, up here through Conan Street and the Shopping Plaza. The Shopping Plaza's not as active in the morning. So we don't really see as much of an issue there, but what we do see heavily in the morning is Dodge Street southbound today backs up and onto Route 128. So this is kind of that morning time period, starting off around 7:15. Not too bad yet. As we start to advance it, you will see occasional times. So it's starting to kind of, you see a few cars coming back onto the ramp. Nothing too, too bad. You can see here at 7:30, Route 128 southbound is starting to back up, just like it does today. But still, cars are able to flow relatively well onto the on-ramp. Cars are coming off the ramps well.
Now, is that move southbound, I guess, you know, off of the off-ramp and then right down towards the Henry's, is it because of the signal retiming? Or is it really because of the dedicated lane there when you take the turn off the ramp onto Dodge or Cabot?
Yes. So this here improves, this ramp here is improving because of the retiming of this intersection. So in the no-build condition, the queues here were backing up all the way back onto the ramp and up to Route 128. And now that, with that retiming, it is not doing that so much. But we will see here, so there is a vehicle sitting here, waiting to make that left-hand turn onto Long Meadow. Although there's only a handful of those in the morning time that are occurring, when they do occur, it does back up. And that will occur in the future as well. So we can see that that will back up. But what we will see is, once that vehicle clears, this will clear out, too, where today, that backs up all the way onto the highway. And it keeps happening. So now that vehicle finally got an opportunity to go. And in a couple of cycles of delay, we'll see that that queue that goes onto the ramp clears out.
Sarah, did you have a question? Might that have saw you originally? Marcus?
Sorry about that. What are you going, I believe it's northbound Dodge Street, get on to the on-ramp south. With the no-build, there's the two lanes. And with the weaving, it'll be one lane until, how much of a difference, if you have it, would that be from the two lanes now, currently, until the two lanes in the build condition?
Like, how far would it, the distance be?
Yeah. So like, essentially, like, you're taking away the two lanes. How much?
Yeah. It's not far at all. So it opens up to two lanes right here in front of the access road. So basically, as you're driving through here, like, as you're passing by this off-ramp from Dodge Street towards the south, and this little access road that comes back in here, that's where it opens up into two lanes. So you're only losing it for these, this little section in here between the two off-ramps.
Yeah.
What was that?
That's northbound?
Yes, that's Dodge Street northbound. Yep.
So 100 feet, you don't have a distance?
Off the top of my head, I don't. But actually, I can tell you, because I can check the map for the length distance. And now it's going to freeze on me, just because you asked me a question. So let's see if I can reopen it.
Looks like about 200 feet. I did a little Google map.
It's in that range, yeah.
While you're looking for that multitask, if you can, Ellen has a question.
Sure, Ellen. Question, Rebecca. Coming off northbound 120, semi-southbound to the Henry's intersection, the current road configuration from the off-ramp to Cabot remains the same. Am I correct?
Correct.
That does not change?
Correct. We are not changing anything on Dodge Street going southbound through the entire network. We're not changing the southbound.
At all.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted that point of clarification. Thank you, Rebecca.
To reopen for me. It doesn't like to open synchro stuff when SimTraffic's running at the same time.
Wayne? I'm wondering if you have any questions or thoughts that you'd like to share and ask?
Not to be facetious, but my first question is, why didn't you do that in the first place?
Like, why wasn't it built that way in the first place?
No, why didn't you have that simulation in the first place?
We should have. We should have brought it to show kind of how it works.
What you are showing us is, as I said one meeting before, you're suggesting, and now indicating, that the post-build condition with extra traffic is better than exists today. And I told you at that time that it was a bold assertion. You seem to have backed up your bold assertion.
Yes. We are definitely saying that this area will work better in the future than it does today.
You are saying that. I guess the next thing I would do is, I'm a little slow-witted, I suppose, but I would need a minute to look at all that traffic stuff and see what's going on. And I guess, I don't know if this is feasible or not, but we're still not traffic experts. And is it, is this something that should be peer-reviewed and have maybe a recap of what we're seeing from a third party or peer review?
We could. So all of the, so the way that you run a simulation, you build a model in Synchro, and then you just export it to another program called SimTraffic, and it runs the simulation. Everything that we did to build the model in Synchro has already been peer-reviewed by VAI as part of their review process. So they would just be basically making sure we clicked the right button and got everything running in SimTraffic correctly. There are very, very few parameters that you input once you export to SimTraffic. It's just related to the peak hour factor. It's just as simple turning it on during the peak 15-minute period and turning it off during the others. So.
So the data that's informing the simulation has already been.
Has all already been peer-reviewed.
I assume that this, the retiming of lights is not dynamic. You base it on some historic usage, and then you say, okay, 123 is what optimizes this based on our historic traffic. None of that's dynamic. It's not reading the traffic at the time and going, oh, 127 would work great today. It's not doing that.
To some level, yes, but for the most part, no. So we set the signal timing parameters based on the traffic that we count on a, you know, particular day. But you do set the signal with minimum green times and maximum green times. So if there's nobody on an approach, but you have a maximum green time of 25 seconds, and after 10 seconds, the traffic's cleared, it'll turn red and move to the next movement. So it can detect things like that. But it's not going to say, oh, today, there's, you know, there was a crash somewhere, and everybody's being diverted, so I'm going to give it more and more and more time. That doesn't, that type of dynamic thing doesn't happen. So it's not seeing the traffic in real time. Is that kind of clear?
Yeah, very much. And it's not, there are no seasonal adjustments or schools in, schools out. There's no other adjustments that you build in to optimize?
There are, actually. So we counted the traffic while school was in session intentionally, so that we're reflecting what's happening, you know, nine months out of the year. And then we also apply seasonal adjustments to it based on MassDOT's seasonal adjustment factors. And then we also grew it out to a future year condition. So we're looking at a 2032 condition, assuming that it will take a while to permit and build the project.
Yeah. You have not emphasized, but it occurred to me that the improvements that we're seeing affect the areas that would be most affected by this new population. In other words, traffic coming on the northbound ramp going, that want to go south. That's the real concern here. There's nothing you're going to do about traffic going northbound on 128 that now wants to go south on Dodge Street. There's nothing you can do about that, right? I mean, partly, I guess, it's affected by the timing of the lights at Henry's.
It is affected by the timing of the lights at Henry's. And then it's also affected by removing that yield condition that people have to do now. So if you're coming off Route 128.
North?
Yeah, Route 128 north, onto Dodge Street, traveling north, there's a yield.
Oh, traveling north. Yes, yes. I was talking about traveling south.
Oh, sorry. You're talking about traveling south.
Which is where there's still a.
Correct.
You're backing up onto the highway considerably.
So going south, we are not changing anything other than signal timings at the Henry's intersection.
Yeah.
But geometrically, we're not. We had talked about and considered restricting the left turn from Dodge Street onto Long Meadow Road at the Henry's intersection. But we understand that there's some history of the neighborhood not wanting to have that movement restricted from when the MassDOT project went through there.
Okay.
So as a result, we have not included that in our mitigation package for restricting that left turn. But that was one of the things that was previously discussed.
I would assume that this optimization is not restricted by cost. In other words, there's nothing that you, the city, the state, could do to make it even better if you spent more money on something. That's as good as you think it can get. Because right now, it's not as good as it could get. Right now, it's not as good as it could get, because somebody and everybody has decided not to spend the money to optimize the light today. And we're suffering because we have not optimized it. And, but this is the best case that you think is viable.
Yeah. It's the best case that's viable with, you know, a reasonable cost. Otherwise, you're talking about.
Without building tunnels and bridges and, you know, airports.
Carrying down the Route 128 overpass and rebuilding. Yeah.
Yeah. I find it fascinating and enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
At what point in the construction process would this optimization, would the signal optimizations occur?
Sure. So I, do you, this was phase one, correct?
I believe.
I believe. Yeah. So we, in our discussions with Parking and Traffic Commission, developed a phasing scheme for these improvements. And I believe all the signal timing adjustments are being done in the first phase. Which is occupancy of site. Yeah. Do you have that? I forget what the percentage occupancy was on that phase.
Actually, the creating the new.
The widening is phase two. Yeah, I think his question was about the signal timing optimization, though. Yeah. So it looks like they're all included under the phase two, which would be prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy on the third new residential building. So essentially, once three of the buildings have a certificate of occupancy issued on them, then, or by the time that they do, we would have to have all of those in place, which includes the extension of the do not block the box, the widening at this intersection, and all signal timing improvements. We will also, as part of the post-occupancy monitoring program, we will be going back out and re-timing these intersections as necessary. So we'll be recounting the intersections each time that the post-occupancy monitoring program occurs, which will occur on an annual basis for up to five years following full occupancy of the buildings. So it will, yeah, the first one will start at the 75% occupancy level, and it will continue on an annual basis until then.
That annual exam, I guess, whatever it is.
The post-occupancy monitoring?
Yeah. Is that an involved and expensive operation? Let me get what I'm getting at. Could you do it more often?
It is a significant cost to go through and do that optimization. And unless there's a significant change to the traffic volumes, it's not really worth going through and doing it again, you know, like on a six-month basis or something like that. Annually is what MassDOT typically uses for their post-occupancy monitoring programs.
Ken?
So assuming this is approved, how many years out can we expect signals to be re-optimized?
Tim, do you know what the final year is planned for completion of the project?
I mean, I know it's not an exact science, but are we talking next year? Are we talking three years? Are we talking five years?
Minimum of five years, because the post-occupancy monitoring program has to occur over a five-year period. So minimum of five years.
Is that a question or are you asking?
Signal. Just the signal optimization timing. Like, if that's occurring, I think you said in your, that occupancy of the third building.
That's, so the first optimization has to be in place before the third building can be occupied.
Okay.
And then it will, once we reach 75% occupancy, so lease-up, that's where the MassDOT's post-occupancy monitoring program kicks in. And that's where we would start on an annual basis until the project is complete. Five years beyond that point, we would have to be re-timing.
Okay.
I'm a little confused. So would the timing optimization potentially be modified each year at the conclusion? So what was the five-year delay that, I don't know what the five-year?
Yeah. So let me try explaining that one more time. So we will have to go through and re-time the signals the way that we have in our model. We'll have to have that in place before the third building within the development can be occupied. And so prior to getting that certificate of occupancy, all the signals have to be re-timed. Once we hit 75% occupancy, we will need to conduct our first post-occupancy monitoring study. We will have, and as part of that, we will have to re-time the signals again. So that's really just checking to see, like, is traffic actually developing the way we thought it would? Or is it a little bit different, and we need to fine-tune a little bit with our timings? And then, on an annual basis, we will have to redo that for a period of five years.
Okay. And potentially re-time things for?
Yeah. So if, when we go out and do the counts, it's showing things drop to a level of Service F or something like that happens. There are guidelines for what requires us to do mitigation. We would refine those.
And after that five-year period, that cost, if we were to continue to optimize every year, that cost would then be transferred to the city, I assume, or whoever felt like doing it?
MassDOT likely.
Who doesn't do it now?
Because those are MassDOT signals.
Who has not done it and would not do it, probably. So we're back where we started five years down the road, probably.
Yeah. But potentially, you know, if, if traffic volumes are changing, it's likely because development is occurring. So it could be a condition of another development to have them.
Yeah, good point.
Do the timing as well. But at that point, you know, our project would be completed. So we, traffic would have normalized. We'll know kind of what's, what's going to happen. And things will be adjusted for our build condition.
Are members ready to hear the next part of your presentation? And that's the internal traffic flow point?
Yes.
Are there any other questions on the simulation at this point? Okay. So why don't we move to the internal traffic flow?
Great. All right. So this first figure here is kind of showing you sort of how the project is laid out with the surroundings and the proposed pedestrian and bicycle connections. So you can see right along here is Trask Lane, running down through, here's the water tower. This is Folly Hill. We've got Cherry Hill here and Apple Village in this area here. So Site A is proposed to be located up in this area. Site B is located down here. And you can see in purple these pedestrian walkways that are proposed that will connect the entire development together. There is also a walkway that is proposed that will come down to Manor Road with a sidewalk along the north side of Manor Road. It will cross at the intersection with Duck Pond Road, and then cross Trask Lane here at that same intersection to a sidewalk that will run along the sort of south side, we'll call it, of Trask Lane in this area, up into the in this area up into the, the off-site parking lot. And that will really be to, um, connect people from that overflow parking lot, um, back over to Site A. We do anticipate that that, um, as we presented at our previous meetings, that lot is really going to be used mostly in the wintertime as, um, you know, people need to clear out parking spaces of snow. People will be able to move their car over there and then, um, move it back into their parking spaces. You know, occasionally if someone has a party, they may have, you know, some guests that need some additional parking. They will be able to use that parking. There will also be a sidewalk that runs along the east side of Trask Lane from that Manor Road intersection all the way down to Site B and connecting into Site B with a crosswalk, um, at the northerly driveway of Site B over into that off-site parking there. And again, we anticipate all the parking for Site B will be accommodated on, uh, Site B proper or on the east side of the road. But when there is snow removal or, um, someone has a party or something like that, people may occasionally use that parking on the opposite side. This southerly crosswalk here is also, um, a bicycle trail crossing as well. So that will be signed as such with a pedestrian and bicycle crossing, where you can see it will connect into, um, existing trail systems here that head up towards, um, Upland Road. And then as well as, um, um, kind of at the backside of Site B, there are some additional, uh, trails that are existing that head over onto, um, the Beverly Golf Course property in that direction. From Site A, there is also proposed to be a connection up through, um, to Colgate Road or Colgate Park here for, um, pedestrian bicycle access, um, up into that area. So that's kind of showing you sort of connections out into the neighborhood and where people could, um, walk and bike, uh, for recreational purposes and to be able to connect to the different parts of the site as well. Um, and you can see also there is another connection that comes down through, um, from Site A along, uh, Manor Road out to the emergency vehicle access, which will connect out, um, all the way down onto, uh, Route 62 in that area as well. So one of the things that we were asked for at the last meeting, I know there was some concern from the residents on Duck Pond Road about how much traffic is actually going to be, uh, driving by, um, their development. And so we put together this graphic that shows kind of the, um, traffic flow, the vehicular traffic flow that will be utilizing each of these driveways. And that's really based on where the parking is located on the site. So based on, you know, kind of about 17% of the parking being located up in this area or in building two, um, we anticipate around 30 vehicles during each of the peak hours that would be using Duck Pond Road. And that's 30 vehicles in either direction. So most of those vehicles, we anticipate, will be exiting in the morning, returning in the afternoon. Um, and it's about a 50/50 distribution during that Saturday midday time period. Utilizing that main access point onto, uh, Manor Road, we've got about 55 to 58 vehicles, um, during the peak hours utilizing that driveway. And then the other access point that comes through Apple Village, about 30 vehicles, utilizing that driveway as well. And then similarly, coming down, um, continuing on Trask Lane down past Manor Road into Site B, uh, we anticipate about 60 to 65 vehicles, um, doing that during the peak hours. So relatively low traffic volumes on all of those roadways coming in and out. So just to kind of recap on the mitigation, I know you saw this slide at the last meeting where we talked about, um, that we would be doing signal timing enhancements at all of these, um, intersections that you see the little signal icon. There are a total of eight intersections where we're doing signal timing, uh, signal re-timing to optimize the signals. And then also some safety improvements, um, at a few of the intersections, including, um, the ramps onto Elliot Street and Dodge Street and then also, um, right in the neighborhood of our site on Trask Lane and Wayside Drive. And I'll kind of walk you through what those all look like.
Before you do that, um, I would like to go back to the internal.
Yeah, you had a question there?
Is that okay?
Yep.
There are a couple of things in looking at this. Building four is where the convenience store is located. That seems to me to be the most buried location for the convenience store, um, possible. Just that's my reaction. It's, um, you know, it's all the way back there as opposed to being in, you know, for example, Building Three, which would be, um, closest, um, access to, uh, the people who are in Site B. I'm just curious as to why the decision was made to put the convenience store there. And, and what, you know, and I know that, you know, you just talked about the, the flow of, of people to and from different parking areas. But I'm, I'm curious as to the, the flow of both pedestrians and potentially cars coming up to the, um, uh, to the convenience store. Do you have any estimates on that?
Sure. Um, so we didn't estimate how many people would be, um, walking versus, um, driving to the convenience store. We do expect a lot of them will be walking because for anyone living in Site A, they'll be able to just walk right across the street from their doorway over. Um, the convenience store is located up in this corner here, which was really intended to be proximate to all these other buildings on Site A. That space was previously proposed to be a theater and game room. So we were able to just convert that space into the convenience market. I certainly understand your point, um, with the concern about Site B. They do have the sidewalk connection here that does come up. It, that purple color that brings them right to the front door there. And then there's also, it's a little bit more roundabout, but they can use the existing bike trails that come up along here to get into, um, that route. Or they can just bike up Trask Lane in, um, either direction. But there's those two options for biking over to the, the store as well.
I mean, the, the entire area is a food desert anyway. So, um, you know, I mean, I understand, you know, some pushback a little bit on the idea of having the convenience store more located so that more people would be able to get to it. But I'm just curious about the idea of any off, um, Site A or Site B residents being able to, um, to use it and get to it. So it just seems buried.
Just, just a point that up in the, the northwest corner, you also have Folly Hill. And you want to keep the convenience store, uh, in business. You are proximal to the, to, to the Folly Hill apartments as well, who are certainly allowed to shop there. So I would, if it were my store, I were the family opening that store, I'd want it smack in the middle of all of the residents, not just the new residents. And that's not too far from centrally located to all of the residents of the, of the area.
Sure. Yeah, that's something we can definitely talk about. I think that's more an architectural type question, too, because I don't know how easily that could be moved.
Space needed for a convenience store, especially since I think there are, um, there are parameters for size that have already been discussed or put out there, so. And I do realize that that's also with, you know, proximity for walking from Apple Village, too, so. Just wondering if that was, you know, what the reason for the positioning was there. And, I, I'm, so you're, you're talking about, from Duck Pond Road, you're talking about, what were the numbers, 30 to, you know, in and around 30 or so an hour?
Sixty and a half.
Uh, during the peak hours, yep.
During the peak hours would be.
Lesser volumes during other times.
At the end of, of Duck Pond up to the parking areas, um, inside A.
Excuse me, that's 30 each direction, if I remember correctly.
Uh, no, that's the two-way traffic volume. So in the morning, it's, um, about seven cars that would be coming in and the rest of that 30 is coming out.
My mistake.
Yeah. Um, and then in the Saturday midday, it's about a 50/50 split. So about 15 cars in each direction. And in the evening, it's reversed from the morning, so.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, and this one off to the side kind of shows you what the, um, one-way traffic volumes are. So you can see here, um, in the morning time period, that's the first one is seven. So there's seven cars that will turn and head up Duck Pond Road. With 24 coming back out.
So what's the cumulative number of, of, of cars in and out in that circle that you have, that you pulled out? You know, because, I mean, personally, as I'm up there, I really look at it as a, like a four-way intersection. Because the roads are all very close. I mean, you have the new, um, entrance. You have Duck Pond, you have Trask, you have Manor. I mean, you have four coming in. I'm wondering what the cumulative traffic that is because that's, it's an interesting intersection as it is right now with, uh, with, it's sort of wide open in a way. And so cars can sometimes come down, I, I've spent some time just on the side of the road watching. They come down with some speed, um, and some, uh, of course, you're talking about marking the, the roads and things like that, so, um, that might become clearer. But some vagueness in terms of what they're supposed to be actually doing.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing the striping as, as something, but I'm wondering about the volume in that area and whether or not where crosswalks and things like that are going to be located so that we could really see the safety in it.
Yep. Yeah, and we do have a slide that shows that area, um, coming up with where the crosswalks and everything are located. This diagram off on the side is showing what the traffic volumes are, will be. So as you see these volumes, the first number is the AM peak hour. The second one is the PM peak hour and the third one is the Saturday, uh, midday peak hour. So this kind of shows you what the traffic volumes are. So like coming southbound on Trask Lane, you've got seven cars that want to head to Duck Pond Road in the morning, 20 that want to continue down Manor Road and 15 that want to continue down Trask Lane that are headed to the, the development, for example.
Having arrows, um, I mean, it would be good to have, I haven't seen that before so that we could study that. And in terms of the math, I, I'm not as fast a mathematician as George is a reader. So, um, if you're here, if you were here when he was doing some of his motions earlier, so I, I'd like some time to study those numbers and really dive into them, so.
Just as we discuss internal and external traffic flow, a quick anecdote. I did a 16-mile errand today on a pedal-assist electric bike. It was a hot and humid day. I experienced little to no duress. So all that you could do to encourage that kind of, uh, vehicle in this area to either be commuting internally or externally would be great.
Little technical things for those watching at home. We're just plugging in the computer so it doesn't die mid-presentation.
That's our fault for making you run all those models, right? Yeah, the models definitely do use up the, the battery for sure. Okay. Sorry, Wayne.
Yeah, that was my point, is just that, uh, modern technology, my pedal-assist electric, solar-powered bike, uh, would be really effective. If I were to live there, I would certainly use it extensively because it means you can, you can leave the area practically without, without using a vehicle on the highway. You know, as long as the paths were sufficient to allow that kind of, uh, of egress. That's just my quick anecdote for the evening.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does anyone have any other, um, questions? Just Marcus?
Sorry, thank you. Uh, going back over to the 75% of the third building, the Building Three, depending on construction sequencing, uh, I don't think these would be built one, two sequentially, one, two, three, four, five, six, each building. Can we clarify in some way that we're talking about 75% of the third building versus 75% of Building Three?
Yeah, so it's, um, before the third certificate of occupancy. So before you get a certificate of occupancy on a third building, that's when all these improvements have to be in place.
The third building built, not necessarily Building Three.
Not necessarily Building Three, correct.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the third residential building. Yeah, so if they don't get built, you know, one, two, three, like you said.
Yeah, you're talking hundreds of units potentially. Thank you.
How much longer do you have? I'm just curious because, um, I know that, um, Ms. Masco wants to, uh, talk about some mitigation issues. Are you going to be bringing up the mitigation issues?
Yeah, so I'm going to, um, kind of skip over this Dodge Street one because I feel like we've discussed that one enough. Just to kind of recap on Elliot Street, you may recall that, um, along Elliot Street from State Road to Liberty Street, we are proposing to do signal timing improvements along that corridor to optimize the traffic flow. And then also, we have witnessed that, um, vehicles backing up between the two intersections here on Elliot Street will block vehicles from being able to turn onto the ramps. So the vehicles do actually obey the do not block the box striping pretty well, but it doesn't extend far enough to actually stop cars from blocking the movement. So we're proposing to extend those markings to, um, prevent that. And with that, that will include some re-timing of the, um, the yellow and red clearance intervals as well to make sure that they match the, the new geometry. And then here along Trask Lane, um, you've already seen at our last meeting, these improvements here at this end of Trask Lane with us implementing the two-way stop control here so that Trask Lane northbound and Wayside Drive would both operate under stop control while traffic coming off of Route 128 is free-flowing like it is today. So we're really just adding the stop on Trask Lane. And that was for, uh, sightline reasons, um, where sightlines coming out of Wayside Drive looking to the south, uh, were restricted, um, by a fence on private property. So we're not able to, um, adjust that at, at all. But implementing a two-way stop does work there. In addition to that, we are proposing striping Trask Lane to 10-foot travel lanes with five-foot shoulders on each side that would be able to accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians, um, walking in the shoulders. We are also proposing to implement, um, speed limit signage as well as advisory speed signage. So, um, in those tight curves that occur near Folly Hill, where you can see those tight curves in here, um, we would have the advisory speed signage of 15 miles per hour, um, traveling through that area. And then coming down to the Manor Road and Duck Pond intersection, you can see that one here. So we would have, um, and it looks like some of the white went away, but we would have a crosswalk that looks just like this one, um, that would be located right here just north of, uh, Duck Pond Road, a sidewalk connecting down through and then a crosswalk across, um, Trask Lane that would be equipped with pedestrian crossing warning signage as well as, uh, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So those are the beacons that you press a button before you cross. It flashes, um, for long enough for you to walk across the roadway and then the flashing goes off. So it's not something that necessarily requires cars to stop. It doesn't have a red light, but it does flash to draw their attention to the fact that pedestrians are crossing the roadway. And then coming down a little bit further to the south, you can see, here's the building at Site B, the off-site parking at Site B. Again, there is a crosswalk that is proposed there. This one will be a trail crossing, so, um, that one will be equipped with a pedestrian and bicycle, um, crossing signage at that one. And all of those will be high-visibility crosswalks with the ladder-style markings so that, uh, with thermoplastic paint so that it can be seen well. And then coming down to Wayside Drive, again, you already saw this one at the last meeting, so I won't spend too much time on it. But at this one, we're really just, um, it's a little bit confusing as you're coming off of, uh, the Wayside Drive ramp where it looks like this is a two-way roadway because the existing stop line that you see right here only comes halfway across the road. There is a one-way sign over here, but it's, uh, bent sideways and hidden by the vegetation. There is a one-way sign over here, but it's bent sideways and hidden by the vegetation. So we would be upgrading all of that, putting in a stop line that comes all the way across the road, installing no-left-turn and no-right-turn signs on Wayside Drive, as you're coming in either direction, so people know they can't turn onto that ramp there. And then also installing the do-not-enter signs on each side of the road. And then, in the event that somebody were to actually get beyond all of that, we would have the typical wrong-way signage that MassDOT uses on all of their highway-off ramps to help prevent people from going the wrong way.
All that's in Danvers? Have you reviewed this with anyone from Danvers or their planning board, or I don't know what their process is over there?
Yes. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, first of all, all of it has been reviewed by MassDOT, and we have been to Danvers Planning Board, they have peer-reviewed the proposed improvements and found them satisfactory. We're not done with the Danvers Planning Board, but we, we're trying to close out an old title issue with them, which is an undischarged covenant, but from our perspective, we have satisfied the requirements that apply in Danvers.
So there are a number of safety and emergency vehicle access improvements that will be completed. Many of these are new, from what you've seen previously. These are, all came about through discussions with the, with Captain Krailing from the Fire Department, as well as with Parking and Traffic Commission. So, one of the study area intersections, as part of our traffic study, the Cabot Street-Conan Street intersection, is a high-crash location. Based on our trip distribution, we don't anticipate sending any new trips through that intersection, but because we do recognize there is an existing safety issue there, as a good faith measure, we have offered to do a road safety audit at that intersection. It is Highway Safety Improvement Program eligible, so it would potentially be something that, once the road safety audit is conducted, that the city could then use that information to apply for grant funding for a safety improvement project at that location. We are also proposing to replace the existing emergency gates at the emergency access points onto Oberland Road and County Way Extension. They're currently ones that the Fire Department has to get off the vehicle and press in a code, "Open the Gate." We would equip those with Opticom-enabled, so they stay within their vehicle, they press the button inside their vehicle, and the gate will open automatically. We'll also be adding a secondary Opticom-enabled gate at the Apple Village end of that emergency vehicle access road, as well to prevent a car from driving down it, thinking it can get out to County Way Extension, and not being able to get out. We'll also be providing a gravel overlay and grading and compaction of the entire emergency vehicle access road, and then paving a 16-foot-wide section of it, so that it would provide access for an emergency vehicle year-round, that wouldn't get washed out from weather and things like that, that could also be used by bicyclists and pedestrians as well, year-round.
Yes, Ken.
Would that County Way Extension access road also be available as a, like, an emergency exit from the neighborhoods, should Trask Lane become blocked for some other kind of emergency?
Yes, I believe it would. That was something that Captain Krailing actually brought up at our last meeting, that we would want that to be available as an emergency evacuation route, as well. Yep. So just a number of transportation demand management measures. I don't know that any of these are new, other than the pedestrian and bicycle connection over to Colgate Park. I think you already saw all the rest of these previously, so I won't spend too much time on, on that. And then this is kind of outlining just that transportation monitoring program that we talked about. So, this would be conducted on an annual basis. It would begin six months after we reach 75% occupancy, and then it would continue for five years at that point, or until after the final occupancy permit was completed, in the event that it takes longer than five years for the entire development to get constructed. That would include trip generation counts at all of the driveways, to verify that the site actually does generate the amount of trips that we said that it would. It would also include turning movement counts at all of the intersections where we have mitigation proposed, which is most all of the study area intersections. And then we would do an analysis of the traffic operations at all of those intersections, to see if the signal timing needed to be adjusted, and if it did, we would go out and adjust the signal timing as well. It would also include a parking occupancy count, both at Trask Commons, as well as at Cherry Hill condominiums. You may recall, as part of the special permit for the parking reduction, there was some concern about if there's not enough parking, would people go over to Cherry Hill to park? So we were asked to also count Cherry Hill's parking, to make sure that it didn't increase significantly over what we counted previously for their parking. And then we would also include a resident travel survey, to assess the demand for a shuttle service. So we would be asking the residents questions, like, if there was a shuttle service to, say, the depot station, would you utilize it? What times of day would you want to utilize it? And if the survey does show that there is demand for a shuttle service, then we would implement a shuttle service directly to, to those locations. So there were a couple of measures that were-
Excuse me, would that, would that also ask questions about an on-demand shuttle service? Or are you looking at just doing it from, you know, Point A, Point B?
Yeah, I guess the, the survey could reveal whether it makes more sense to do an on-demand service, or whether it makes sense to do certain times of the day to run that shuttle service.
That would reveal, you wouldn't necessarily ask those questions?
So, yes, we could ask-
You said, you could ask the question.
We could ask a question, that would be in there, yeah.
I thought it was more of an inference.
But if we had some people, like, if the times of day people would want to travel were all over the place, then it probably wouldn't make sense to have a fixed schedule. That's where the on-demand might make more sense. Yep. So there were a couple of measures that were requested of us from Parking and Traffic Commission, that we have not currently committed to doing. One of those includes installing video detection at the Cabot Street and Conan Street intersection. That intersection currently has no detection located, so it's running on a fixed timing. So, like you were mentioning about the dynamic timing of the, the signals, it is not able to adjust the timing. There's always 20 seconds on one approach, there's always 30 seconds on another approach, regardless of how much traffic is passing through. So Parking and Traffic requested that we install video detection there, so that it could actually tell how much traffic is on each approach, and optimize the, the intersection. We did look at the, that option, or that request, but based on the distribution of traffic that was included in the traffic study, and that was reviewed by the peer reviewers, by MassDOT, it all showed that there is not anticipated to be an increase in traffic through that intersection as a result of the project. So that is really an existing condition, that we are not going to be worsening at that location. So we have not committed to doing that one at this time. The last one was a request to install sidewalks on Trask Lane, on one side of Trask Lane, from Manor Road up to Upland Road. That one, we have proposed instead to do the striping, the 10-foot lanes and the 5-foot shoulders, that would be able to accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians. Were we to do a sidewalk, it would only be able to accommodate pedestrians, it would not be able to be wide enough to accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians, which would leave bicyclists in the roadway. But it is also a pretty significant cost to install that sidewalk, which, without looking at drainage and utilities and things like that, that would be needed, it would be over $400,000 to construct that cost. And really, that sidewalk would essentially go to nowhere, because there aren't any connections that residents can make out of the neighborhood, traveling up to the north.
And you're not going to ride your bike onto the highway. Is there any separation in the road, you have pedestrians in the road at this point? Is there any kind of separation, or raised line, or anything that separates the pedestrian traffic?
It would be a striped line, is what we're proposing, so like, a shoulder line, essentially, a striped white line, to designate that that area is not for vehicles to travel in.
And how wide, where, how wide are your travel lanes?
The travel lanes are 10 feet, and that was at the suggestion of, initially at the suggestion of Parking and Traffic Commission, before they made the recommendation for the sidewalks.
It seems pretty narrow of a travel lane to have a pedestrian walking on a shoulder next to it.
The intent was to have a narrow travel lane, in order to help to slow people down, for traffic calming purposes, to have a narrower lane. We initially proposed an 11-foot travel lane, but it was recommended that we go with a 10-foot instead, for more traffic calming.
And how long is that, that area of roadway where you would have this?
It's about 1,500 feet.
George?
I really don't like the idea of hashed, like, lines. I feel like those are more often disregarded than solid lines, and I'm wondering if you could maybe expand a little bit on the thought process there, in terms of just, that, to me, does not make it a, that, to me, does not suggest that a motorist is not going to go into that, any more than a, more than a solid line would, do you know what I mean?
So we're not proposing hashed lines.
Sorry, you said like dotted lines along the side, right?
It would be like a shoulder line, a white shoulder line. So this is showing-
No, 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 no.
There's clearly some concern. Do you have a, a graphic of?
Yeah, so it's, it's up on the screen now. It's showing that what would be proposed would be a double-yellow center line here, with 10-foot travel lanes, and then there would be a 5-foot shoulder on each side.
Okay, that's a solid white line.
It would just be a solid, white shoulder line.
I apologize, I must have just misheard what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, so here's the crosswalk, yeah. Yeah, so you can see the dimensions here, and what that would look like.
Would it, would there be indication that this is a shared pedestrian-bike lane?
I think we actually do have "Share the Road" signs proposed at the northerly end, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
But we could add those if, if we don't.
All right. On the subject of signage, there's a lot of crosswalks in the area. I, would be a great idea, I think, to add a sign that says "State law requires you to stop for pedestrians and sidewalks." It is state law. Yield to pedestrian-
I teach classes on this.
What's, I'm not sure I know the difference, but yield, if there's someone standing on the sidewalk, you must- Doesn't that mean stop?
You're supposed to yield to pedestrians in your half of the roadway.
So you can brush them, or get close.
Thank you for the clarification. I usually cross the road with a brick in my hand, just to make sure.
Do you, do you have an example elsewhere of a travel lane with a double line, that's only 10 feet wide, with a pedestrian walkway, so that we could see what the experience with this is?
I can find one for you, sure.
And so that we can, we can, rather than seeing it as a brand-new attempt here, that we have some, some historical analysis.
We could probably, we could probably find a half a dozen in the city of Beverly. I just don't know that we're, you know, generally creating them-
It's not a brand-new thing, this has been done for a long, something like these kinds of things have been done for a long time, but-
I wasn't necessarily saying it was brand-new, but for, for the people who are in the area, who are wondering about the striping, and how effective it is, I'll just be direct on it, and that is, I personally would like to see examples of this in other places, just so that everyone has comfort that this works, and actually operates. So, I think that would be helpful to you, and I think it would be helpful to other people who are examining the question of a sidewalk for pedestrians, rather than having them walk on the side of the road.
Sure.
Personally, I think that would be helpful.
Yep, we can find that for you.
Wayne, and then Nate.
Clearly, I think we're all surprised at the, the concern raised over this particular issue. But the only example I can, that readily comes to mind for me, is, is the road down into Lynch Park, where there is a narrow roadway and a solid line separating the pedestrian and bicycle lane, which is also, has cones running up the full length of it. So apparently, somebody decided that even at Lynch Park, with slow-moving traffic down the hill, that the narrow lane and stripe wasn't sufficient, and they put cones there all the time. So there is some concern about this.
Nate?
I just wanted to back up what you and Wayne were saying. I think for most level-headed people, when they see that line on the side of the road, that means, okay, I'm just not going to veer off into that, but there's a lot of people who just see that pedestrian bike area, and see, oh, I've got a wider road, I can drive a little bit faster. You know, I think, I've read study, plenty of studies that show that just a wider road in general implies you can drive faster. So I think, having some kind of separation, you know, as Wayne was talking about with the, the cones, that explicitly tells you, I'm not supposed to be here, this is for the pedestrian. Yeah, when I think of that white line, I think Route 1, you know, you see, see the same thing, so.
Judy? Oh, sorry, sorry Nate, yeah, continue.
I've all said.
Maybe rumble strips would make sense.
Yes, okay. I just want to add one more voice on this question, and I guess my general concern is, there's a number of things where I'm assuming that there is evidence, even for something as straightforward as, do the narrower lanes actually have a traffic calming effect? You know, is there, is there evidence that can be brought to bear? And then, yes, this whole concern about the shoulder and the shared bike and pedestrian way, there, I think, again, and, but perhaps even more so, I would like to see what evidence there is, that it has the desired effect. I understand the goals, and I don't dispute them at all, but, you know, I think the concern that many people are raising is, is for a real reason, is that, thinking about walking in a, in a, on a side of a roadway like that, even the sharing between pedestrians and bikes strikes me as, you know, a challenge. So that's the concern that I'm raising.
Okay, thank you. George, before we go to you, I was wondering whether or not Rich Benevento, who happens to be here, and happens to be the Chair of Parking and Traffic, whether you had this discussion, and perhaps you can sort of talk through the thought of the, the commission?
Sure. Thank you, members, again, for the record, Rich Benevento, Chairman of the Parking and Traffic Commission. This has been a very complex discussion for the members of the Parking and Traffic Commission. We had several meetings, there's been several discussions on a lot of the topics that you've discussed tonight, and it was a tough decision for the members of the Parking and Traffic Commission. We know this is an as-of-right project. You have, you should have a letter, I don't know if you, if it's been distributed yet, it was dated June 30th, revised today, and I'd like to just go to one of our excerpts from the findings of the commission. Says, "Following extensive deliberations, review of evidence presented, public comment, and detailed discussion, the Parking and Traffic Commission finds this project to be oversized for the project site, and that the resulting impacts will have a potential detrimental effect on the character, logistics, and operations of the city. Further, it is the commission's opinion that the mitigation offered by the applicant may not be adequate to address the impacts in Beverly, and within the Trask Lane area." We talked about things like optimization. Optimization is adjusting signal timing and phasing. You heard about one of the intersections that doesn't have detection, so it's just running on time-based. There are ways, to your earlier question- There are ways, to your earlier question, Mr. Miller, there are ways to improve traffic operations, an adaptive system being one. An adaptive system looks at traffic, traffic as it's happening and it can adjust timing, it can adjust cycle length, it can do all of those things. I can appreciate that we're going to do a do-not-block-the-box and make sure people don't sit in it. Striping, put up some signage, some striping and signage. The commission's very passionate about this. We talked about the fact that they're not going to do video detection at Conan and Cabot. If anybody who lives in Beverly, if you can't get on 128, where do you go? You go down Conan Street. So the fact that the data said that, well, there's not a lot of impact there, right? Well, what happens when there is? We, we already know, it's just, it's just time-based right now. The fact that we have 2,000 trips a day, 2,000 trips a day, that's a lot of traffic. And I can appreciate, Rebecca does a great job. I know Rebecca from the industry. She does a great job and simulations are great, but we're anticipating, these are estimates, at the end of the day, the city's going to own the problem. And we say at the Parking and Traffic Commission all the time, we want development in Beverly to be successful, but it cannot be on the backs of someone who's trying to get to work in the morning while this project is being built and fully occupied. That's not fair to the citizens of the city of Beverly. So there's, there's things in here, it's a landlocked parcel, it's a tough site, but 2,000 trips a day in 440 units, the commission was unanimous on the conclusion that the project's too big and there's going to be impacts from it. So I've been sitting here listening all night, I have a whole bunch of stuff, I could go on and on and on. You have our memo, the memo that came from the commission. It discusses a lot of the things. We just talked about striping a pedestrian stripe, five-foot shoulder on each side for pedestrians, unsafe. There needs to be vertical separation in order for pedestrians to be safe. So we propose to the developer a five-foot sidewalk with, not granite curb, just to, just to keep costs down, a six-inch bread loaf type of curb, bituminous curb, five-foot sidewalk, one foot offset shoulder, two 10-foot lanes and a four-foot shoulder on the other side of the street. They don't want to do the sidewalk, okay, that's okay. It'd be up to you to decide whether vertical separation is important for the safety of pedestrians. These are the kind of things that you'll find in, in our memo or our letter. So there, there are things that need to be fully vetted, I believe, I don't think we're there yet. The commission did its best job to discuss some of these things and come up with some recommendations. We believe this will address some of the impacts, not all of the impacts. The weave, we talked, Rebecca talked about the weave to make, kind of go down and make that left onto Conan Street. That's a short distance to try and make a weave, especially with all that traffic in the morning. And again, these are all simulations. So I'll leave it with that. I would, I would ask that, that the Planning Board review this letter. If you have questions, you can contact me, contact Arlene, and we can provide additional information if you need it. The last thing I would like to say is, our hearts go out to the loss of Ellen. She was a colleague, as we are with the Parking and Traffic Commission and the Planning Board. I've, I've written several letters to Ellen over the years, but she was a colleague and we, on behalf of the Parking and Traffic Commission, want to extend our sincere condolences to her and her family and with hope folks can find comfort knowing that she's in God's glory, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I appreciate the fact that you did call out this is a by-right project and the difficulties that come with that in terms of putting together a mitigation program that works. Having just received the amended letter and not having a chance, I admit personally, to having a chance to read it, I think it, you know, will, will be a good thing for us to absorb. And, you know, I, I know that we don't usually do this at the, the Planning Board, but perhaps as we run up to our next meeting, it may make sense for you or another representative of the commission to be on hand, to be able to help us with the perspective of, of the experts, the same way that we, you know, we rely on parking traffic and design review and CONCOM and, you know, but this is, this is, you know, an extraordinary project in terms of the scale and, you know, the, the issues that we're dealing with, especially since the, you know, it's landlocked, food locked, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, thank you very, very much. And George, did you have any follow-up on, or? Your, your question, okay, all right. I apologize for cutting you off, I, I just wanted to grab that one.
No, I, I remember, actually. You know, I, I, I don't think that's a particularly safe, you know, condition for a pedestrian either. I do, at a certain point, we're asking one developer to fix a lot of problems in this city that they didn't create and I understand the argument, they may be exacerbating some of these problems and to that extent, I do think mitigation is reasonable and I think it's up to us to decide what that level of reasonableness is and how much we do ask. You know, and I, I take the point that the project seems too big and out of scale, you know, we zoned it that way, folks, and we left it there for 50 years and it's a by-right project, as you just mentioned, right? I don't begrudge the developer for, you know, trying to, you know, maximize their profit out of the, out of the property and, you know, frankly, I'm sure they could argue that they could even build more up there, you know, with the amount of land that's still there. I, I, you know, this is just a microcausum of that, you know, whether it's going to be $400,000 for a, you know, a sidewalk to nowhere. We have sidewalks to nowhere up there already through Apple Village because the city made them install those at that point. The city just never did it when they built Folly Hill and, you know, some of the other developments up there. I don't know the full history of the site, but I do know that for 50 years, it's been this sort of odd animal here in the city and now we're, you know, putting a lot on the backs of this developer to try to fix a lot of these problems that we've all sort of recognized. So, sorry, this is more of a general thought, but it kind of was prompted by this whole discussion of pedestrian activity up there, so, anyway.
Thank you, I think those are very fair points, so. I'm, at this point, I think that we're just before the 10 o'clock bewitching hour. However, I would like to give a few minutes or give time for the very patient members of the public who've come today and are probably watching online or attending through the, the Google Meet link to make any comment. But before that, I would say that I think it's quite clear that we'll be continuing to talk about what's been presented to us this evening and that, that we've been very attentive and heard a lot of comments before. So if it's possible for you, when you get up or when you speak via Google Meet, to raise the newer issues that you have, that will be a good opportunity for us to be able to track them, to make sure that we're attending to them at our next meeting and, and for what you're saying to be absorbed in relation to what we've been presented tonight, if that's a fair thing. I think, I think it is. What I'd like to do is, do we have a list up there or we don't have a list going? We'll start with people in the room. If you'd like to make a comment, if you can come to the microphone at the podium and introduce yourself by name, first, last, and address, that would be terrific. If you want to wait till the next meeting, believe me, we will be here. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Bill Squibb, 509 Cabot. Two issues, that ramp, when you're, from your development coming up 128 and take the Hamilton exit to make the turn, at the base of that ramp, I heard you, all the discussion talking about Conan Street. However, at the bottom of the ramp, there was a direct access across to a small plaza that has a gas station, a Chinese restaurant, and some stores and offices. One car tries to go across at that, at the bottom of the ramp and if the southbound traffic on 1A don't let them across, then it just backs up everywhere, including right up the ramp onto 128. And I've seen that happen many times. So I don't know how that could be addressed, actually, except, you know, no, they'd have to go up and turn around and come back to get to the plaza. Secondly, the timing that was discussed. Right now, I believe that the Henry's intersection lights are timed with the other lights on Elliot Street and totally timed toward the Coming Center. So if you're going to change the timing of the lights at the Henry's intersection and the Fire Station intersection, how is that going to affect the timing of the other lights, including the ones on Elliot Street at Danvers? So just those two points for the moment. An adaptive traffic system sounds like a great idea.
Thank you very much, Mr. Squibb. Ms. Brown, do you have any immediate thoughts or do you want to come back to us with an analysis or whether or not people coming along Cabot, taking a left into the shopping area was taken into consideration in the different models?
Yeah, in the interest of time and for us to take a look at this, if we can come back at the next meeting.
Okay, and the Henry's and whether or not it's already been timed for a different area of the city and then what that means for re-timing. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Beatrice Hines. I live at 17 Conan Street and I have some concerns that weren't addressed by either the mitigation plan or the peer review. No consideration was made for the big trucks coming from the industrial park on Conan Street that pull the extra-long trailer boxes. They all have a sign on the back that says, "This truck makes wide turns" with a crush picture. These trucks must be in the right lane on Conan to make a left turn or onto Dodge or must be in the left lane on Conan to make a right turn onto Dodge. Many drivers disregard the truckers' directional blinkers and they fill up the wide turn lane. The cement islands make a right turn impossible for a truck with a 50, 50-foot box. Trucks must pull into Dodge into the westbound lane, then wait and hope the drivers will let them back up so they can jockey in reverse to turn and try to clear the cement islands. It usually takes three green lights for those trucks to make a turn. I have pictures on my phone. It takes one or two lights to make a left turn, depending on how well the traffic will, will do that, let them go. Second, the traffic volumes that are...
If I could interrupt you right there, just for a second. So the pictures of the trucks, I think you've shared with the board, have you sent those in to us?
I sent them to...
Okay, and I don't, have you seen those pictures?
We got those earlier.
Okay, and so the issue of trucks making those prospective turns is something that you can come back and address at our next meeting?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we, we addressed it, oh, sorry.
We addressed it a little bit. A comment came up during the MIPA review process about this issue and we had addressed it there, that we're, although we understand that there is an issue there with trucks making that turn, we're not doing anything to make it worse, we're not changing the, the geometry of that intersection, we're not adding any truck movements onto it. We can certainly, like, look at a truck turn analysis, but we're not making it worse, it's an existing condition at that location, so...
In terms of the existing conditions, that's worked into what you've already been looking at in terms of traffic flow and any delays and things like that that come up? The same way someone taking a left-hand turn onto Longview has been taken into account?
So we have included the truck volumes in our traffic study, yes, and in the analysis. And the, the analysis does account for the fact that it takes trucks a longer time to make their turns through the intersection and everything.
Now, in perspective, but, but perhaps we can have a little bit deeper look at it for, you know, three or four, five minutes at our next meeting?
We can take a look at it.
Thank you very much. And what's part two of your question?
I also challenged the volume that they had depicted on Conan Street at 5 o'clock. The green light from Dodge onto Conan is currently five seconds. The left, left turn queue lane holds four cars and then the queue backs up into the traffic lane, the travel lane that's supposed to be expedited. How will you mitigate the five-second green light to turn from Dodge onto Conan? The, the, the new Axcelis warehouse is going to bring more super trucks. I guess my, my main thing is I, I don't see how changing the lights is going to accommodate all the interruptions to traffic for walkers, walklights, bike lights, bikers, and, and these trucks that can't make the turn. How, how is a traffic light going to know what is coming down the road? If we removed some of those traffic islands at Dodge and Conan, it would be a pedestrian's nightmare. So I, I don't see how that would work either. I talked to someone that was talking about walkable Beverly. From Conan to Henry's, the sidewalk is this wide and it has phone poles in it so that you walk this way between the fence at Dollar Tree and, and you would never take a baby carriage or a, anything down the street. So people have to walk on the side with it mitigated.
On the microphone, please. Thank you.
People have to walk on the side of the street where they're going to make the super lane and the wider turn and that'll interrupt the sidewalk flow of pedestrians, so. I also wish to acknowledge the passing of Ellen Hutchinson. Our city has lost an outstanding public servant and I always appreciated the way that she conducted public hearings and imparted a certain dignity to people offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hines. Any other comments?
First, Patrick Knight, for Duck Pond Road, Beverly, Mass. First, I'd also like to, to comment on Ellen Hutchinson's passing. She taught me a lot, showed us so much patience, made it all possible. I just, she's going to be greatly missed. Moving on, the, the couple of points I wanted to make just briefly is, that intersection we're talking about, the five-headed monster, we call it, that also has a school bus stop for Hannah Village, just wanted to point that out.
There's a couple intersections that can be referred to as five-headed monsters in this area.
Okay, I'm talking about the one of Duck Pond Road.
Thank you.
Trask Lane and Manor Road. It's going to be having a number of new entrances, we're going to have about five or six entrances added to that one spot. That's where the school bus is going to be picking the kids up, so I don't know how that's going to be factored into this whole scenario. I don't see a lot of crosswalks for it, but it's right at that corner that they, that they exist. I just wanted to point that out.
We'll look at that next meeting as well, in terms of school bus locations.
And just briefly to point out, as you mentioned about coming up Duck Pond Road, all the traffic for the store will now be using Duck Pond Road for our traffic, you know. Briefly, I wanted to point out, I saw the numbers about how these were coming out. During rush hour, I know we're talking over 200 cars per hour. I don't think that those numbers added up that way, the assessments of where they were coming from, but I'd like those numbers to be looked at. That's about it. Thank you all for your time. I'm gonna, I have a number of comments from another, of other people, but I'm going to save them for the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Please be patient with me.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Hi, Karen Johnson, for Duck Pond Road, number 206. I'm wondering, are you planning any modifications to Duck Pond Road? Are you leaving it the way it is? Are you leaving it the way it is?
I believe that the site plan set will contain some adjustments to the Duck Pond Road access following the discussion that Cherry Hill had with Corcoran. So that new site plan will reflect some increased access to the rear of your building, which I think was one of the concerns that the association brought up. So that will be included in the next plan.
Okay, so on the entrance where it comes in, is that going to be lanes striped? Just like, right now, it's a free-for-all. It looks like a driveway. It doesn't look like a road. It's not like two lanes wide. I don't know how wide it is, but I'm just wondering, is that going to just be left pretty much in place as it is?
Yeah. So if you can see this here, so this is Trask Lane, Manor Road, and this is Duck Pond Road. So we were proposing to actually install a stop line and the center line on Duck Pond Road. So like you said, it would be obvious that it's a two-lane road as you're coming.
So is that going to go the whole length of Duck Pond?
Yes, so as Miranda was mentioning, there's still ongoing discussions with Cherry Hill for what it will look like beyond that point. So we've only shown the first 100 feet of Duck Pond Road here, but we're showing a double-yellow center line when we go in.
Okay. So do you have the easement to use to go through Manor Road as your main entrance to Site A?
We do not have the easement secured yet, no. And while we are not, we are certainly, Corcoran is working very hard to pursue a deal for the easement, and honestly, just to get Apple Village's attention, it's been challenging to do that. So we are proposing to proceed with the site plan as you have seen it. If the easement is not provided, then the site plan will stay the same, except that the Manor Road, the new Manor Road access will be eliminated, leaving the two access points, as we've said all along, from Duck Pond Road and from Apple Village. There would be no modifications to the site plan that would need to be made to reflect the loss of the easement. Everybody's worked very hard, understanding that we are, you know, we're very much pursuing the easement, but we can't guarantee, based on where we are right now, that we're going to get it. So the site plan that you are getting reflects some changes that are necessary to make sure that the layout works either with or without the Manor Road.
And so at our next meeting, you'll be able to show us and walk us through that in more detail?
Yes.
Okay.
And as much as I hate to say it, the loss of that easement does not eliminate this from being a by right project still.
Excuse me?
The loss of that easement does not eliminate this from being a by right project. It's still a by right, whether you...
Of course, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying to the audience.
Okay. Thanks.
So what that means is that they still have the right to build this project, and that the easement isn't a deal-breaker for the project or by right, is what it means, basically. So, and we're going to have the opportunity to see what alternative flows will look like if that easement is not in place, and we're going to see that at our next meeting.
So you're saying that if the easement doesn't go in, they're going to show us the proposed plan and traffic flow using Duck Pond as the main entrance to the project on Site A?
It's not what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
It's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, at our next meeting, we're going to see the updated diagrams and drawings of the site that show what sort of flow will take place as being proposed by the applicant if there is not an easement. That's what I'm saying, is, so we'll all discover this new flow at the next meeting. In the meantime, the documents have been filed. They are going to be being reviewed by Planning Board staff. The Planning Board will be, will have copies. There'll be...
Planning Department staff.
Planning Department staff.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Ken. And then we will be, we'll have the information, you'll have the information, and we'll all be able to look at it. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, just wondering where that was going.
Okay, hopefully I'm clear in that way.
Yeah, yeah, I understand it now. Yep, just trying to get clarification. A question, what is the speed limit on Dodge Street North from Henry's to the Shaw's or the other intersection with Conan? What's the speed limit on Dodge Street North?
We'll get that number for you. 35 is the typical, I think, for that type of street.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, is there an optimum distance for weaving at that speed that we, that is accommodated by the distance that they're proposing? So if you have 380 feet, I believe, was from the off-ramp to the on-ramp, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, is, are people going 35 miles an hour coming from Henry's? Is there going to be enough room at that speed to weave safely?
So it's a good question. It's, is the weaving design follow the standardized guidelines for being able to weave in with the size of the road, the speed limit on the road, et cetera? And that's something you can address, Ms. Brown?
Yeah, so the length of the weaving distance, the traffic volumes and the speed are all inputs that we put into the analysis, and when we put all that information in, it did show a level of service B occurring there, which is an optimal level of service.
Did you say B or D?
B.
B, okay, thank you. And are there any accommodations for pedestrians in that area?
Yes, there are, and I can bring those up on here. Oops, sorry. So there is an existing sidewalk that runs along this side of the roadway. We are proposing to have a crosswalk that would be located crossing that off-ramp there with pedestrian bicycle warning signage, although not shown on this plan. We were asked to add some advanced signage up the road. We will be adding that advanced signage. We did agree to do that. And then for bicyclists, those are currently traveling in the roadway on Dodge Street, so we would use that extra lane width there where it widens out currently to two lanes. We would use that to provide a buffered bicycle lane that would then come across where bicyclists would join onto a widened sidewalk here that would be eight feet wide to accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians, that would continue up to the overpass where at that location bicyclists would be directed with signage to dismount and walk underneath the bridge because it's not wide enough under there for both. We have been asked by Mass DOT to meet with their complete street section, which we do plan to do before the next meeting, to meet with them to discuss this area, to see what is the best treatment for bicyclists in particular in this area. So we may potentially have an update at the next meeting on this plan and how bicyclists get accommodated.
Okay, thank you. I just have one more question. How are you making Dodge Street North from Henry's a single lane? How's that going to be delineated? From the, you know, the off-ramp, which you're going to take off the yield sign and make it a free flow, and so it's coming into that, how will those two lanes be?
Yeah, so I don't know how well you can see this on here, but right now Dodge Street northbound already is a one-lane road coming up through here. So we're just proposing to continue that striping. So we'll have a hatched area in here that will separate a bicycle lane from the travel lane, so that this would remain one travel lane coming up through.
And then you're going to continue that hatching after the right turn from the off-ramp?
Nope, so the off-ramp would come into its own lane immediately adjacent to that Dodge Street northbound travel lane. And then as you continue further north underneath the bridge here, it shifts to this type of dashed line to indicate that vehicles are allowed to start changing lanes at that point.
So it'll be a solid line at the end of the ramp?
It will be a solid line up through to the bridge. It ends right here before the bridge, and then it turns to a dashed line underneath so that cars can start their weaving movements.
That's the weaving? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Are there any other questions from inside the room? How about online? Don't see any hands there.
Can I make one more comment? Or is that out of order?
No, Mr. Knight, you can make one more quick comment.
I, we keep talking about...
Again, introduce yourself, Mr. Knight.
Patrick Knight, for Duck Pond Road, Unit 202. Thank you again for your time. We keep talking about this as a by-right plan, but that doesn't mean we can bypass safety issues. We keep saying, well, it's by right, so we got to just let all these things go by. These are the things that have to be looked at the most. We have safety issues. If it doesn't work, then that doesn't work, and you have to adjust to that. I don't see why we're just letting these safety issues go, because, hey, they have a right to build there. Look at these. If the road isn't big enough, that has to be addressed.
Well, Mr. Knight, I think that our discussion tonight and our questions are all meant to determine the safety issues, to look at what mitigation should be in place, to come to some sort of agreement as a board as to what we support for mitigation to address these issues. Those things haven't been decided, nor has anyone said, "This is not a safety issue. This is not a safety issue." When we talk about by right, it means that the developer has a right to build this project. What they presented to us, absent the waiver on parking, which was to reduce parking, which was granted to them, is within all of the regulations, the zoning regulations of the city. However, the ramifications of the numbers of people, the numbers of cars, the traffic, the existing infrastructure, and what has to be done and needs to be done is all up in the air right now and is being examined. So we haven't made any decisions on that, and we've had recommendations from numerous boards who have given us feedback so that we can make as informed a decision as possible to both understand that we really can't deny the project, but we can look at the mitigation that goes with it to make sure that it's a project that we can all be happy with, and if not happy, content that, you know, it is a safer project and a safe project. So that's what our goal is, and we're committed to that. So rest assured, rest assured that this is the process, as messy as it may seem, for us to be able to get to that spot, and your input and participation is a key part of that. So thank you for being here.
I do appreciate that. The one comment about that exit off of 128 going towards Beverly, if we want to go towards Beverly, now everybody's got to jump over into that lane. This car is going to be waiting here. Nobody could go straight because they're trying to blend in. How does that work? Welcome to Beverly by trying to get into a solid lane of traffic that's coming down Dodge Street heading towards Beverly. Now you're going to try and get from the right lane to the left lane in a solid wall of traffic. That's one thing to consider.
Think it's, think it's the other way.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Knight.
I just want to make it perfectly clear that I appreciate Acting Chair Beckwith's making it very clear that we are by no means letting the safety issues go, and I resent the implication. Thank you.
George, did you want to say something? Looked poised there on the, near the microphone.
I'm good. I always have a little more to say, but I'm good for right now.
I think that, oh, okay, sir. We have a late entrant, ladies and gentlemen.
Danam Ahmed, for Duck Pond Road.
What's your last name, sir?
Danam Ahmed, for Duck Pond Road.
Thank you.
First, you know, I want to go back to Ellen Hutchinson. I've never met her, but I think everyone in the duck, four Duck Pond, four and two Duck Pond Road are condolences, as always. The first thing is, you know, I don't understand...
If you could speak closer to the microphone, I'm sorry.
The first thing is, the peer review reports, can we see them? Like, I live in a trust-but-verify type of world. I was an auditor. I don't trust until, unless I could verify the numbers. So can we get some type of report on the peer review that everything has been peer reviewed?
We had the peer review person...
Let me check to make sure that they might already be online.
Yeah. Actually, come and give feedback and, you know, actually validate what the applicant is being, is proposing in terms of what the numbers are and what the, in terms of the changing of the traffic light timing and the changing of the lanes, et cetera. I actually don't know of a particular intersection that the peer review individual, and I forget his name right now, you know, called out and said that was a disagreement, so...
They are online, on the Planning Department's webpage. I just double-checked to make sure that they're there.
Okay, all the lights and everything in from this crazy intersection and 62?
Yeah, that's going to be on there. The only thing, there's going to be the peer review, then there's going to be a response to the peer review, then there's going to be a response to the peer review. There's several iterations of it all available on, what's that?
Response to the response.
Response to the response, yeah. It's all available on the Planning Board's webpage under Trask Lane, under Projects Under Review.
So, yeah, if you go to our page there, look at the project, you'll find the documents there that we received, as well as, you know, him answering our questions and giving his feedback to us. And so his comments on everything that is, was looked at, is being looked at, are there.
Okay. The counts on four Duck Pond Road, I'm not sure where those counts are coming from, the 20 and the 30, is that per, is that per hour? Is that per day? Like, I'm confused.
Yeah, those are the hourly traffic volumes that would be generated by this development. So those are new trips that would get added to Duck Pond.
Okay, so this is 800 units or 400 units, I mean?
440 units, yep.
So that's at least 600, 700 cars. I don't understand, I don't, like, because every unit...
Yeah, not the hourly traffic volume.
What was that?
So these are hourly traffic volumes, so these are during the peak hours in the morning, evening, and midday.
Okay.
So those volumes are nowhere near 600 vehicle trips.
Okay. So what happens when, if, as you go through this process, year one, year two, year three, or five, and they are, these are not the expected numbers? What do you guys do? Just walk away?
No. So as part of the post-occupancy monitoring study, the first step is checking that the traffic projections that we had were accurate. So if we are generating more trips than what we had estimated, then we have to start looking at additional mitigation measures. Those could be things like implementing the shuttle service that we talked about earlier in the night to reduce down how many trips are being generated, or they could be other, you know, additional adjustments to timings. It could be other geometric things. There's a number of different things that could occur. But if we are exceeding our estimated trips or we make an intersection much worse than what we had shown in our traffic impact study, then we have to do additional mitigation measures.
Okay. So for the last whatever hours I've been here, you know, talking this through and seeing this planning, I don't mean to sound rude or disrespectful. All I heard was a bucket of paint and some signs going up. All I heard was a bucket of paint and some signs going up and nothing about safety. And I know we're going to talk about safety in future meetings, but that's all I've heard from... for our community at the Duck Pond and Trask Lane. Like, this stuff, that's a city thing for the highways. Now you're saying there's no easement. I don't know what the board is. Is the board helping developers get the easement? Or you guys just... No. Okay. The board is not doing that. So now the Duck Pond Road is taking all that heavy burden. And I understand this land has been sitting around for 50 years and you guys didn't do anything? And like one of the board members said, we shouldn't put it on all on the developers? Well, guess what? You guys are putting it all on our property, on our land. And that's crazy. Like, we... for those many residents to come in and just go all cut through our parking lot where there's kids playing around, there's people jogging, and there's pets is insane. So you're not going to put it on the developers, but you're going to put it on all on us. That's what I've heard.
I understand that that's what you heard in being here at this particular meeting, but I would just say, Mr. Ahmed, that what the whole process is, is to look at the concerns, to address the concerns, and at this point in time, science-based concerns of striping and all of those things may seem trivial, but there's a history of many of these things actually working. And we have numerous boards across the city, scores of people giving their input into us, and we... and our goal here is not to dump it on any resident in any project that we do. We're here to work with neighbors, to make sure that we're hearing what it is that you're saying and what your concerns are, and that those things are addressed, and to verify that there are actually concerns that you need to be worried about. There's a whole range of things that we are responsible for that we're actually doing. So please, you may not be feeling that right now, but as we go through the process, we have at least one, if not two, long meetings in front of us to look at this project and looked at, you know, not just the impact of this project on Duck Pond Road, but also of every other resident that's up there, of the businesses and the other commuters who are driving through this area. We're not looking to have anyone bear a burden. We're looking to make sure that this project will work to everyone's satisfaction. And that really starts with you and your committed team of neighbors who've come to meeting after meeting. And so we're hearing you, we're listening to you, and I would just ask that you let this go out, let us listen to you, and we'll get to a place that's different than what your perspective is right now. So I would say that, and thank you very much for your comments tonight. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else from the board or any member of the public have anything to say? Yes, Ms. Semeska.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments listening to this evening. One, in terms of Duck Pond, I think it's important to emphasize how hard the developer is working to try to get the easement. There's no... you know, it's a better project for the developer to obtain the easement, but we are trying to be as forthright at this point as we possibly can and make sure you know that we don't have assurances at this point. The access that goes over Duck Pond Road, as well as through Apple Village, are both existing easements and largely on the site that is being developed. And I think that's important to clarify. The other item I wanted to just emphasize is that... and some of that came out this evening. I think it's important to highlight. Before getting to this place, we have been through extensive peer review of, I don't know how many iterations of peer review, five iterations at least, just with the board's peer reviewer. We've been in front of Parking and Traffic Commission. We have gone to Mass DOT, which has produced comments that have been submitted to the state. And all of that data has been incorporated into the EIR statements filed with the state, reviewed by Mass DOT, and reviewed by MIPA. So I think it's just important... I know the board is doing its job. I think it's helpful to remind the board that this... you are not seeing this for the first time. There have been a lot of other people and a lot of checks and balances to make sure that Rebecca's data is correct and that the assumptions she's making are up to industry standard. And I think that bears repeating here. And finally, I wanted to say with respect to the mitigation, what you've seen here tonight is one piece of the potential mitigation for this project. We are still getting comments from the Engineering Department. We are working with... there are additional comments that came through with the Conservation Commission. The applicant's working very hard to put together the best mitigation package that they can, sort of ranking the items by significance and by cost, of course. And there is a concentrated effort to do that in a way that is going to give the board the confidence to approve this project. So I can assure you that the decision not to go forward with the sidewalk was not one that was easily taken, but the applicant really is trying to draw the line at those items which have a direct nexus to the impacts from this project. And frankly, the existing condition along Trask Lane is an existing condition. This sidewalk would create a new sidewalk over just a portion of Trask Lane without remedying the situation in its entirety or even providing the connectivity that it is supposed to be providing at a significant cost that the applicant thinks would be better spent on some of the other improvements, for example, paving the emergency accessway to County Way. So please bear in mind that I think the applicant has been very respectful in this process, and we are listening to the boards, but what you are seeing is only a piece of the mitigation that ultimately is going to come down on this project. For, as I think members have suggested, to address a lot of conditions which already exist citywide before this project is being built.
Thank you very much for that. I would say, with all due respect, that you probably don't need to remind us of all the mitigation and all the meetings that you're having. I think we're pretty aware of that. We're also pretty aware that there are many things that you've been working very hard on besides what's in this particular room, and that this is a huge project, certainly huge in terms of Beverly's perspective. And the decisions that you're making individually as a company in terms of what you would support and don't support, things like that, are actually your decisions and not necessarily the Planning Board's decisions. And I just make that clarification right now. But we understand your position. We understand that we're going to be diving in a little deeper into those things in future meetings and appreciate that you're here with such a large team to be able to give us the information we're looking for. And I think at that point, you're heard, we've heard from the neighbors, and I think that we're in a good place for tonight. If anyone has any questions, yes, George?
I was going to ask if you wanted a motion.
I would welcome a motion.
Move to continue the public hearing for Site Plan Review Number 168-24 and Inclusionary Housing Number 30-240, Trask Lane, applicant Corcoran Trask Lane LLC, Attention Peter Mahoney... Mahoney? Sorry. Mahoney, I apologize. EVP to our next meeting on August 19th.
I have a motion, second by Ellen Flannery. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, eight to nothing. We will see everyone again on August 19th. Thank you all very much. That's the last public hearing we have today. I welcome a motion to come back to our regular meeting. Moved by Ellen Flannery, seconded by Mr. Gomes. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, eight to nothing. We're back in regular session. We'll just wait for one quick minute since we have not adjourned. We still have some business, thank you very much, to attend to. We missed our 10 o'clock target, ladies and gentlemen.
I didn't. I've been unconscious for 40 minutes.
So, and let me come back to the... we have two things. We have approval of minutes... no, we have set public hearings. Okay, we have waiver of frontage and definitive subdivision for 24 Lothrup Street, Daniel C. and Susan A. Johnson, applicants care of Alexander and Feminow, One School Street, Beverly, Mass. What... yeah, what's it look like? Pardon me?
It's little.
It's small?
It's approved by the ZBA.
It's... yeah.
As the first step... I'm sorry. ZBA approval is the first step in getting a waiver of frontage and definitive subdivision plan. So it's already been approved by the ZBA.
Okay, Ms. Flannery, you want to make a motion?
I do. I want to move to set the public hearing for the waiver of frontage and definitive subdivision at 24 Lothrup Street for August 19th.
Is there a second? Seconded by...
Wayne got it.
By Mr. Miller. And let's see. All those in favor?
I got it. The second.
Opposed. Okay, that is on August 19th. Sorry, it's late. Next is Special Permit Number 201-25, 114 Hale Street, 114 Hale Street LLC, care of Alexander and Feminow. And how is... how complex is this?
It's a parking...
Ah.
...waiver from parking requirements or special permit for deviation from the parking requirements.
For that area.
So I would assume they'd be fairly quick.
Most likely.
Yeah. That being said, I'd welcome a motion. Yes, Ms. Flannery?
Mr. Beckwith, I move to set the public hearing for August 19th for Special Permit Number 201-25 at 114 Hale Street.
Is there a second? Yes, Nate, thank you. And discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, eight to nothing. It is on August 19th. Approval of minutes? I'd welcome a motion to have those...
They're simple.
Okay. Let's get them done then. Okay, approval of minutes for July 2nd, 2025. Have members had a chance to review them? Yes, Ms. Flannery?
Mr. Beckwith, I move to approve the minutes for July 2nd, 2025.
I have the amendments.
Some amendments, basically Scribner errors?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So there were some Scribners that Ms. Flannery caught, so I'm comfortable with that. Is there a second by Mr. Gomes? All those in favor? Opposed. Our minutes from July 2nd, 2025 are approved as amended, right? So before we adjourn, there's one other thing, and that is sadly, we need to plan for voting on our next chair. So that would also be a matter of business for the 19th, if people are comfortable with that.
It can... anytime in the near future. I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be the 19th. It could be this... it could be in a September meeting. It's whatever everyone here is comfortable with and decides.
Or it could be now.
If Mr. Beckwith wants to continue serving as acting chair.
Well, I would... yeah, well, I think we do, as a committee, have to look at having a chair, whether it's in August or September, you know, and who's interested in that and going through the process. I think we need to be able to leave us enough ramp room to be able to do that without feeling rushed at the end of a long, long night, so...
I guess I would just suggest that if we are without a willing applicant, we should know that as soon as possible. On the other hand, if we do have a willing applicant or more, then we should know that as soon as possible.
So is that a backhanded way of asking questions?
Yes, it is.
Personally, it would be an honor, but I also know that there are very capable people on the committee who may also be interested. And so I think that people should have a bit of a chance to think about that, and then we can, you know, make a decision as a board, you know, either in August or September.
What is the protocol for communicating one's willingness to serve?
There's usually a nomination.
Is that a backhanded way of asking if it was you?
If what?
You're putting yourself forward?
I am absolutely not.
There's usually a nomination, but it's also something that has to be on the agenda to occur.
Yeah.
I see.
So...
Yeah.
Yes.
Mike?
Would there be any value in delaying on the off-chance that we fill an additional seat? Because we also have to elect vice chair. I know it would be odd for...
Potentially.
Potentially. Like, I mean, I'm just thinking, I know it would be odd for someone to come on the board and immediately serve in a role like that. However, I mean, Ellen was the only lawyer we have at this point, right? Like, you're training to be one. I don't... is anyone else one? No.
I play one on TV.
I feel like that's a huge loss for us. And so if we were to have someone appointed who filled a really important slot, maybe they'd want to be vice chair. Just a thought that it may be relevant if there were people in the queue for the open seat to consider delaying if you were willing to continue as acting. Just another suggestion.
I think it's an excellent point.
Can I throw out there that you do seem to need a vice chair in case Derek's not able to attend a meeting or, you know, unexpectedly? So it's a weird position to be in because how do you elect a vice chair when Mr. Beckwith is the vice chair?
I get it, yeah. You have to abdicate first.
I mean, in that case, in the case where if during his time that Mr. Beckwith is serving as acting chair is unable to attend a meeting, I would contact another board member to say, "Do you want to run this meeting?"
Okay, if there's a process for that.
I'm guessing that's how it should work?
Yeah, you should probably, in the meantime, Mr. Clasen...
I'm sure there's like a Roberts rules or a...
If you could ask the City Solicitor's Office about now we have a committee without a chair. I would just say, having served both as acting chair for a number of meetings over the last couple of years, having served as vice chair, I think the committee is best served by having both of those roles filled and not going a while without that. I think that also, I don't know what the mayor's plans are. I don't know who knows what the mayor's plans are.
I'm texting you right now, actually.
We had a full complement of members for the first time when Judy joined us in two years, but Ellen was not able to attend that meeting. We haven't had a meeting with a full amount. And I think that personally, I think it makes much more sense to have a chair and a vice chair than to coast along for three, four, five months without that.
Since I've been staffing this board, it's never been full.
Yeah. So, you know, and that's my view. I mean, I'd be honored. I mean, candidly, I would be honored to be, but I'm just one person. And so I, you know, you have, you know, great minds and, you know, any one of you could be chair. So we... I say that we put it on the agenda. If people... if the will and the feeling of the committee is not to do it in... and the feeling of the committee is not to do it in August, and I personally think that we should plan on doing it in September. Um, I think that we can also look at our normal, um, uh, election. Uh, if you remember, for chair is in January or February every year. Um, so this would actually be more of an interim chair appointment than a full chair necessarily, um, because, because we're going to be doing it all over again in six months, five months, something like that. So, that being said, we can, um, if we don't set it for next month now, um, or actually, you know, I don't know, as vice chair, acting, I'm not acting chair, I'm just vice chair right now. Um, I'm not sure I can just have the chair's prerogative and put it on the agenda. Um, so I think that we need to vote on whether or not, if we want it to be in August, then we have that vote. If we don't, and the idea is to wait and make a decision on when to vote next month, then I, I think we do that. I think that we don't need to do a formal vote on it. I think we could just sort of
This is tricky. I, I guess what I'd like to see ASAP is an acting vice chair. Because if you are indisposed in the next month or two, we're sitting here with a, in confusion. So the sooner we have at least, we have you as acting, as vice chair, or as acting chair, we need an acting vice chair.
Yeah, I think it's a fair point.
I don't know how we do that. I don't know the logistics of the legalities of that, but.
I mean, so far I've, I've, you know, heard, it seems a couple of people like, do we have to rush into this? So my, um, thought is that we make the decision in August about whether or not to vote in, um, have a vote in September.
I mean, while we can find
We go one more meeting, and, uh, we all hope that my card doesn't break down.
You don't break down.
That I don't break down. Well, I think the argument can be made that I'm already broken down.
You could, you could make
Okay, so we'll wait to, um, make a, a decision on it until next meeting, but we will
And I'll add it to the agenda so it can be more
Trust me, anybody can fall asleep in the middle of a meeting. I mean, it can happen.
Okay. So, uh, with nothing else on the agenda, Mr. Klassen, is there anything else?
I hope not.
Okay, there is not. Um, I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moves?
Moved by Gomes, seconded by Miller. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.